Good evening. I'll call to order this February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Fairfield Plan and Zoning Commission Special Meeting. I have writing first to our administrative session, discussion of public draft, public hearing guidelines. I think this is an important discussion, though I think we need to keep considering what we have behind us. As the commission knows, a draft, a draft proposed rules or guidelines for hearings were sent out for review. In light of our very busy schedule, it struck me as a good time to consider this. The commission generally has been very lenient with time afforded to applicants and time afforded to the public. Sometimes that has gone on a little longer for applications than maybe it needed to be, but in the past, those kind of discussions were always very good. And they still are. Problem is now we find ourselves with an exceptionally busy schedule with the moratorium fast approaching and a bunch of applications that are in the hopper, so to speak. And there is a need, I think, for putting rules in place to expedite meetings, to be efficient, not to ram things through, not to not give any, not to miss the underlying standard that we should be hitting for hearings for fair, you know, that there's under, there's a fairness, due process accorded to everybody, but I don't think it's in anybody's, anybody's best interest to have long meetings that miss deadlines on applications. We're meeting once a week now and that's, you know, much more than everybody else has signed up for. So Artemia's chair is very amenable to having something in place so that I can rely upon them to move these meetings forward as exactly it's my job to do so. So I think Commissioner Randolph had proposed some draft ideas and sent them out. I don't, we're not going to be voting, I think, on anything today because particularly Attorney Phil Pierce had provided at least two comments that I did not get a chance to at least submit out to the commission. So I don't know if that thing's going to be voted on today, but I think it's important to have a discussion about this. So I think we should keep it brief, though, considering we have things behind us, but I'll open it up to the commission to talk, you know, about, I think, is with these, at least in the back of our minds, is something to discuss, but I'll open it up to the commission for talking or discussion.
Just one small point, I think, on applicant speaking time, instead of saying thirty to sixty, just make it up to sixty minutes to be discussed with the chair.
Yeah, and honestly, there could be times where it's ninety minutes or two hours or something like that. I mean, a lot of these time constraints have me as being kind of a, what's the word, an arbiter of giving more time. So never anything where after the time, after the shot clock ends, you're out, so to speak. You can always ask for more time, which is, I think, very flexible. That can certainly be amended as such, yeah. Commissioner Randolph?
I've got some feedback on this from the public, and I just want to emphasize that this, these guidelines are consistent with other bodies with me in town. I think RTM has a specific time limit for public comment or that has a specific time limit for public comment. State legislature has a specific time limit for public comment, and so far, we haven't had that. And I think I really respect Commissioner Noonan's emphasis on allowing the public to speak, but it's a little benefit from having some expectations over how long people could speak. And I know that Commissioner Noonan is very liberal in allot, allotting extra time, so I have no concerns that will not be, especially concerns. I think that this is also guidelines for the commission to, commissioners to be more disciplined in their, in their questions with the public's time as well.
I have a question.
Hi, Commissioner Brown.
I have a question for Commissioner Randolph because I, I know you sent an email which was explaining these later on today, and I'm looking at the email now, and I had a question about your point. I think you were trying to explain how this relates to Roberts Rules of Order. But you're pointing out one rule, forty-three point one oh, no member can speak more than, oh, you're saying no commissioner, not member of the public can speak more than twice because the rules would restrict the public to speaking only once.
Not sure if I
Are you saying the commissioner can speak twice or a member of the public can speak twice?
Under Roberts Rules, a commissioner can only speak twice, and that's never been the case.
And that's on one issue, but in a public hearing setting, how do you define what the issue is? Because we're not voting. You have maybe five witnesses each presenting different types of testimony on like, let's just say, the applicant's presentation. Would a commissioner be limited to just two times speaking, then how do you ask questions of each of the witnesses if you need to?
I would have to defer that to the chairman who moderates the meeting. I was just pointing out in our private email conversation, specific from Roberts Rules, which are not.
I mean, I think the idea would be that after an applicant speaks, either after the total presentation by the applicant or potentially by each discipline's presentation, engineering, architecture, landscaping, et cetera. That's the commission have a set amount of time to ask questions at the end, whether it be five minutes, ten minutes total, whatever the case may be. I thought the only speaking twice dealt with when it was voting, but I don't remember that yet. It's, like, Minister Went saying as much as well, that when we're voting, you'd have, like, ten minutes or twenty minutes total, ten minutes for each session, but that can be discussed later. This is more for public hearing purposes.
Okay, so for voting, the ten minutes would rule, not the five minutes? Because this doesn't differentiate between a voting night and a public hearing night?
Well, I thought the whole idea was for a public hearing, not for voting.
Okay, so public hearing, a commissioner would be confined to five minutes twice in the applicant's presentation?
No, I think it'd be, depending on how we did it, either it's you get five minutes for the totality of the applicant's presentation or a set amount of time for, at the end of each discipline. So I have a copy. Thank you.
Okay, so, okay, that, yeah, I would certainly not be in favor of five minutes total because it all depends on how complex the application is. You should be able to ask questions of each person if you need to. And also, could one commissioner yield their time to another?
It's not in there right now, and I, yeah, I don't know if it's under Roberts, but Mr. Randolph is saying not, I'll defer to him because I just not, I didn't read it to this morning. That's subject to, that's subject to these rules. Guess that would be the, because the other part of this as well is Attorney Phil Pierce had pointed out to me this morning. Carter says that we would follow Roberts Rules unless the body, the commission decides to adopt another set of rules, so that's the whole point. I think it
Can we, okay, so I took Attorney Perez's seminar, but I don't, I have not been able to find Roberts Rules as it applies to a public hearing. To me, that's different than when the commission takes up executive session. Because you have multiple witnesses, the applicant might need more than an hour. And I'm sure you would grant them more than an hour if it's a complex three-hundred-page packet, you know, with multiple experts. It seems to me that could be unduly restrictive. And also, how would you track the time? Would it be split up or would the commissioner have to ask all their questions of all the witnesses at once so you could track the five minutes?
I mean, subject to our discussion, but at least as written here, I think it would be after the application, after the present, the initial application or after rebuttal.
It seems to me it might be more efficient, just a thought, if you could ask during each witness, because then everybody's listening and they're, he doesn't have to repeat what he said, you know, half an hour earlier.
Well, I think, I, what I've learned in the last few months is I think we need to have the applicants, at the very least, whoever the expert is talking about, the, about the architect or the engineer, their presentation before you ask questions. I think when we interrupt the particular expert is where things get longer.
So a commissioner could ask a portion of their five minutes after the first witness and then a portion of their five minutes after the next witness and so on.
Potentially. I mean, I did, that needs to be more clarified, I think, is the point.
Yeah, I, I think it's a little unduly restrictive, limiting it to five minutes because some of these are very complex. And then as far as the public, I, I understand the limits. I know most, you know, most commissioners I've been before, they limit it to like three minutes or so, but I would say not to rely on form over substance. If it's a light night, why not let people talk a little longer?
I mean, I, I think as been said, and maybe to my detriment is being too kind and liberal, that I've normally let people talk. Get their, let their, have their say, and I can imagine if someone went through three minutes, they said they had another twenty seconds, we wouldn't, we or I wouldn't grant them that. But there is something to be said, I think, about having expectations about time limits for the applicant, for the commission, for the commission members and for the public. They listen, we're looking at three minutes. And, you know, as an attorney, I remember being asked by a judge how long things are going to take, tell them it takes ten minutes and it actually takes twenty. And sometimes it's helpful to see that clock, see that there's a somewhat of a time limit that, you know, other people have to speak on. And considering where we are now with our workload, I mean, certainly the public has a right to speak, but I think us volunteers, meaning once a week at this point for very, are going to be complex, long, emotional applications. I think certain curriculums need to be granted back to us as well.
As far, going back to the applicant's presentation, I'm ignoring the rebuttal for now, just the initial presentation. If all five or all seven commissioners ask questions for five minutes, does that get tacked on to the sixty-minute presentation? Or is that supposed to be within their sixty-minute presentation?
No, I don't think it would include that, but we can be more specific. Again, this is just that, so.
Okay, um, getting back, okay, so getting back to the public, it says if, if a member of the public hires a lawyer or an expert, I assume they would have more time than the two minutes or three minutes?
Yes.
And they would be, the entire public or just the presentation with the experts would be confined to the same amount of time that the applicant had?
Expert and the opposition's attorney.
Okay, and if a member of the public files an intervention, a twenty-two-eight-ish nineteen environmental intervention, but they don't have a lawyer, are they then considered somebody that would have the same amount of time as the applicant's presentation?
I think that would depend, but I suspect if they're intervenor status, they would probably have what the attorney or the expert would have because at that point they're a party.
Right. And if a member of the public does not have an expert, they're limited, but if, what if the member of the public is an expert, is an engineer or has some kind of expertise, can they speak longer if they're providing us expert opinion, but they're also a neighbor?
I would think so.
Okay, I think that should all be clarified in this. As far as commissioners asking questions of the public, I, I, it's mentioned three times in this document that commissioners would not be allowed to ask questions of the public at all. So I don't understand that, and I can't find anything in Roberts Rules that prohibits that. Is there a reason for that or, or foundation for that?
As it says, unless the chair permits it, again, so it's not an absolute disqualification. I mean, I think we should be listening to the public and letting them present, and unless there is specific and technical need to ask the question of a public, member of the public and a neighbor, for example, with potentially a property line issue or something very specific, I think asking a neighbor that's two store, two rows down about traffic, more specifically, is more getting general information that I don't think we should be in a position to be seeking. It's their time to present and, you know, asking these additional questions, I think, from them of, you know, also, like I said, it's more specific and technical. I don't think is appropriate. I mean, normally we commissions let members of the public speak, not asking questions. I think we are somewhat unusual in asking members of the public questions. With times, I acknowledge we've dated, but I think the general rule should be that we do not.
I, I would like to get that clarified with the town attorney, if he's an expert on Roberts Rules, because I, I don't find any way that should be prohibited. You, you know, my opinion, I feel like people who live in the area have very important factual testimony, and sometimes you need to explore that a little bit to understand it better. We've got videos, we get dimensions and measurements and descriptions of traffic patterns, cut-through speeding, overflow parking, things like this, which you might need a little more detail on. So it seems to me like the public is an expert in their own neighborhood. They're not an expert on, say, flooding or drainage, but they are an expert on traffic patterns or flooding patterns in their neighborhood. I, I would like to remove that from the document that we're not allowed to ask questions. Because again, we have to make a record. If, either way, it could go on appeal. And if the evidence is not in the record, then that's bad. It's supposed, it has to be in the record.
I mean, this was submitted, I think, this was submitted to Attorney Pierce, who, as far as she, he gave me two recommendations for Robert Rules conformity. I don't have them in front of me right now, but otherwise was okay with them. And again, I'm not sure if Roberts Rule says one way or the other, because this is more of a public hearing setting, not motion, not related to motions and such. But again, I believe letting the public speak is important and that the general rule should be not to ask questions of the public, and that should be an exception. And it is provided in here that a general, the general rule is not to ask questions of the public unless the chair permits it.
Okay, so we'll hear from Attorney Perez on that, I guess. I'm a little bit concerned about limiting the applicant because some of these applications are four or five experts again, explaining a two- or three-hundred-page packet. And I think this could end up in shorthanding the presentation, which would then, again, prevent us from being fully informed. We, we cannot be expected to comprehend every
Oh, yeah, there you are.
Yeah. We, I don't think commission, can I just finish my thought for a moment?
Commissioner Levy brought that up already about limiting the applicant, and the idea is not to limit the applicant, it's to set a timeframe for when the initial presentation would be. Commissioner Levy suggested putting up to sixty minutes, and frankly, I would be okay, you know, so certainly would depend on the complexity of the application. It could be in ninety minutes or a hundred and twenty, you know, two hours. It's just to set an app, you know, initial presentation time. So it's not the saying they only get sixty minutes or thirty minutes. It's to get a sense of what the application is, how long they're going to take.
I think it's, yeah.
If they're going to take ninety minutes, fine, but I think the idea is best that they have sixty minutes. It's, let's set a time for how long this initial presentation is going to be and try to adhere to that as best we can.
Okay, I, I hear you. I, I think it's definitely good to plan in advance. I just don't want to incentivize the applicant to not have all his experts speak because we need to hear them explain their detailed materials. We are not experts and we don't get expert advice. So we, we need to hear that because that sometimes clues us in to things we couldn't pick up on, not being experts. But I would say that the restriction of thirty to sixty minutes should be removed and simply discuss ahead of time. So you have a, so you, as the chairman, have a sense rather than put in artificial restriction. A lot of these things are artificial restrictions, which I don't think need to be in here. It, it, it should be, you know.
I think the guidelines that in the absence of more of a specific agreement, this is a guideline.
Can this be posted on the website so that we can access it more easily? I had to go through my email to find it.
Well, I'm not, for a draft like this, I would think, I'm not sure if that's needed at this point, but I'll talk to staff about it.
I also
More questions then? Can I go to Commissioner Corcilla?
Oh, that's all right. Go to him. It's fine.
Commissioner Corcilla?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, look, I think, I think the chair has a an exceedingly difficult job in managing these meetings and has, and has done a great job in in running them in an orderly way. But I think these proposed guidelines would be a tool that would help him to carry on these meetings efficiently and effectively. And I think there's something to be said for the predictability of spelling out what we're looking for in terms of the length of presentations and comments, et cetera. I, I think allowing the chair to have discretion to waive time limits or to extend time limits makes sense. I think he's, he's done that pretty consistently in the past. But I think, you know, having, setting those expectations in advance, I think, is going to help these meetings go a lot more efficiently. I know when I've testified, I've testified before the RTM on ordinances that have been proposed. I testified in the Complete Streets Ordinance. When that was proposed, I found it helpful as a member of the public to know that there was a three-minute timeline or two-minute timeframe, I forget which it was, and, and to know that I, you know, to keep my remarks within that. And I think I, I probably went over a couple of seconds too, but it was something to aim for. And I think it will be helpful to the public, to the commission, to the applicants having some sense of what they should be aiming for in terms of timeframe. And I, you know, I think the first thing I did when I joined this commission as an alternate was to buy a copy of Roberts Rules of Order. This is this is consistent, completely consistent with Roberts Rules of Order. My understanding is, as far as public comment goes, from a Roberts Rules perspective, different from freedom of information, the public doesn't have a right under Roberts Rules to speak. That is at the discretion of the commission. And, you know, then, of course, there are separate rules, separate requirements under freedom of information. But so I, I'm not concerned at all about limiting testimony to three minutes being somehow in violation of Roberts Rules, I think, just as, as other boards and commissions in this town do. We can limit it and, and it will be in compliance. I think towns and cities of, of all sizes across the country have reasonable time limits. So again, I, I, I think this is consistent with Roberts Rules. I think it's consistent with freedom of information laws that we have. And, and I think, you know, it will make for more orderly and efficient meetings.
So let me just kind of and just state this last part to kind of end this, because as I said, we're not going to be voting on anything tonight. This is kind of a first salvo to get, you know, get this topic on everybody's radar. As I said, and then we've been saying, I've been saying this for a while, and I think everybody on the commission understands that we need to be as prepared as possible for these meetings so we can be as expeditious and fair as we can. That requires better questions from all of us, more targeted questions. So we're not wasting time. If you have technical questions that can be asked of staff, that should be done before the meeting, so we're not, again, learning this hearing as opposed to asking targeted questions. I think we, everybody seems to be in agreement with that, and I hope everybody commits to it. Maybe we won't have a need for this. I see it as very helpful because as we come through these, especially these eight-thirty G applications, there we have normally, in a neighborhood or any application that's been very that's controversial in its own right, when we have the public come, listen, my role is to keep things moving and to keep things moving now as expeditiously as I can. I don't want to come across as being arbitrary against the public in that we're moving things along and we aren't able to ask questions. And to the extent that this commission can help me as well, that will be helpful because especially the, the big thing for me is seeing these, seeing a document with rules is that I can point to something that the commission has agreed to as a, you know, basis for decisions that I'm making. I'm saying to any commissioner, listen, that's, that's too technical. Let's ask that question later. I don't want the public to think that I'm trying to stifle what's going on or stifle things getting into the record that they think is potentially helpful to them, and then I become a boogeyman, so to speak. I'm able, I don't want to become arbitrary. I want to be as consistent and as fair as possible, and this kind of a rule-based document would help me in that. Now, we may not need it because if we all get better at what we're, you know, at these questions and these hearings, we may not need it, and that would be great. The extent that I am getting more aggressive in the near future and moving things along, and there may be backlash from the public who may not, may see that differently than me, any help from my fellow commissioners will be greatly appreciated and support in that respect. So unless there's anything else, can I figure we just move on and in the theme of keeping things moving, so to speak, we go on to the public hearing.
Now, can I make, have another question?
Go ahead.
Materials outside the public hearing, I'm a little concerned about that, not just asking us to seek technical information, but also, and by the way, if we get technical information and it answers a question, I think that should be on the record. But also, frequently, things are submitted after the close of evidence, and I think if we're going to have guidelines, we should include that because that could run afoul of, of due process if, if certain types of things shouldn't be allowed to be submitted into the record after the close of, of the public hearing. I think that's something we should add to this if we're going to have rules. I also
You know, evidence should not be given after the time, and I, that's the whole reason we have emails sent to a specific email address. So that, that can be monitored for our benefit and for the
Well, I'm saying we ask for evidence. We sometimes
Oh, no, no, if we, if we seek input from our agencies, that's not, we are allowed to do that after the hearing, asking our town engineer or fire marshal for something, well, we're entitled to do.
If it's something that already exists, that's a routine thing that's missing from the record, I suppose.
If you want to add that to this, that's something we can do. Yes, I'm sorry.
Adding a new opinion would require a new opening of the public hearing, but then I have two other things that could make the process more efficient also. Number one, forwarding emails automatically. I know it's an IT issue, and that should be dealt with with the IT department. We can get them earlier. If we can get the applications as soon as they come in the door, instead of, you know, later on, we can start looking at it without, you know, getting close to the date of the hearing. If we can also have a rule that if there is a wetlands permit or a WPCA permit that has been granted ahead of time, that should always be submitted as part of the record along with the code review minutes. Sometimes we get them, sometimes we don't, but if we have them, we have more information ahead of time, and that's very useful.
We, I will, I'll ask staff if that's possible, especially with the new applications and companion approvals. We, we can't do automatic forwarding of emails, though, because it should have committed, should the hearing be concluded and a member of the public or anybody sends an email after the fact, it can't be sent to us. That's extra information after, evidence after the hearing's concluded.
There's a technological way of turning it off, you know, for a hearing. And also, the problem is when we get scans of emails, you could have a dozen scanned together. One might be from a public official, one might be from one neighbor, another neighbor, a lawyer, and, and you can't do a search, and then any hyperlinks are lost when they're scanned. So it, it becomes really difficult in, in applications where there's literally hundreds of letters. It'd be nice if we had a better way of doing it. I would like to get them all forwarded, honestly, but, and then
Can I make two comments on it, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I think we, let's just, I would just move on. Let's and Commissioner Brown, I would think if there's anything else, like I said, we're going to be adding to this and working on it. This isn't the only time we're going to have a chance to talk and discuss this. So if you have any other thoughts, and I would, and you or anybody, I would think, make note of them so we can discuss them further later. But I, with everybody here, and it being a half hour in, I'd like to turn to the public comment if we can, or public hearings.
Can we send red lines? And how do we send those to each individual commissioner or to TPZcommission@fairfieldct.org?
Send it to Jim and myself.
Just you? Okay.
Stay in gym, yes, Went, Mr. Went.
And will we take this up again next time, or will we get an opinion from the town attorney first?
I, I will get something from the town attorney, I believe, and then we can discuss when to move it, when to discuss this next.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, members of the public for that. Sorry. As, as things happen, it takes longer than you expect. Turning to our public hearing, two-twenty Pansy Road, subdivision application of Cardamas Construction for three lots in and Turning to our public hearing, two twenty Panzi Road subdivision application of Cardamas Construction for three lots in and A-Zone. Harry Fallon, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh for the record, my name is John Fallon. I am here representing uh Cardamas Construction. Uh Mr. Dean Cardamas is here tonight, as is our environmental uh consultant. Mr. Bill Kenny, who was instrumental in getting us the inland wetlands permit that has been approved and I'll briefly discuss. I'll try to be um quick here. This is a relatively simple application. It's an application for subdivision with regard to the property at two twenty um Panzi Road. The property is eight point uh five six nine acres. It's a large tract located in the residence A-zone. As you can see from the plans that have been submitted. The proposal is to uh divide the property into three lots. Lots two and three, as shown on the map that's been filed for your consideration, will be utilized uh for the construction of two single family homes. In compliance with the provisions of the regulations. Lot one, as you can see, is a very oversized parcel, eight point one one three acres. And that is to be dedicated as open space pursuant to section two point three of your subdivision regulations. Uh with regard to the disposition of the open space, uh the applicant proposes that it be transferred to the town. Pursuant to the provisions of section two point three point three point one of the subdivision regulations. Uh we did receive an inland wetlands permit, and as part of those proceedings, we did receive confirmation. Uh from uh the town conservation department that they would welcome the transfer of the open space to the town. And they find that such disposition is in keeping with the open space objectives set forth in section two point three point one of your regulations. Indeed, the inland wetlands permit, which is uh twenty four dash zero zero three seven, issued on August sixteen, twenty twenty four. If you look at page seven and eight, and that document is part of your record. Uh staff in the person of Mr. Bishop does articulate his reasons for why he thinks that the uh open space would be beneficial. If transferred to the town. And in essence, what it would do is it would not only provide for public access, but it would put the town. Through the conservation department in direct control of the parcel, rather than just applying a conservation easement. Where the maintenance and preservation of the open space is left to the uh property owner. So that's the application in a nutshell. There's not much more to it. Three lot subdivision. Uh compliant with the regulations, two single family homes. Um and um a very large open space parcel, which conservation department would like and recommends be conveyed to the town. So we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, we hope you will favorably consider the application.
Questions, Nick Mission?
I have a question about the uh appraised value.
Yes.
It says the somewhere in here, it says the appraised value is um. Nine hundred thousand dollars. Was that done with, is that fair market value? It doesn't really say in the email chain with the uh tax assessor's office.
I believe that's fair market value upon which the seventy percent assessment is based. And it is, it is the opinion of the uh tax assessor.
Okay, so our regulations require that we, we went through this once before on another application. That we have a um the town and the applicant agree on a an appraiser. To obtain the appraised value. Was that done here?
Only if you're if you're going to refer to a fee in lieu of open space. But we are suggesting, and the town conservation department is suggesting, that we just deem the property to you. So that the 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 matter that you're referring to would be a proper methodology. If the the commission determines that it doesn't want the open space, and that therefore a fee in lieu of the open space would be uh warranted. But we haven't gotten into calculating that because we are hoping and suggesting, as Mr. Bishop is, that the town accept the property.
I always like to take property instead of money anyway, but um I do feel like the information needs to be provided so we can make that determination.
Well, you have the information because the tax assessor has valued the property at nine hundred thousand dollars.
Right, but that's. Right. And that was not done underneath, uh that that was not done the way the regulation calls for it, but.
No, that's incorrect. If the the regulations do not require, e- e- even if you're talking about a fee in lieu. Uh does not require further examination as long as the property owner accepts the town's valuation. As a proper basis for the fee in lieu.
I'm going to ask Mr. Went, we went through this about a year ago. I I don't think that's correct, but I would like to get.
Commissioner Braun, uh we don't need to go down the rabbit hole, so to speak, because they're giving the property, not. So let's not visit the old fee and new uh talking points that we had.
Well, we have to vote on that.
We have to vote on whether we'll accept the property, yes.
That that has to do with the value also. It's a choice between money or property. Like I said, I always take the property, but I think that this commission should be informed about the value the way our regulations require.
Right now, they're offering the property only.
Correct, that's that's at the recommendation of the conservation.
So there's been no proffer of a fee at this point, so that's not before us.
I think it is. On the third lot, is uh the, can you put that um picture that um? Were those wetlands flags on that uh plan that you had before?
Yes, ma'am. We did receive a a full inland wetlands permit, and and as part of that process, Mr. Kenny and his colleagues did flag the wetlands.
And those, the two houses, are they in the wetlands flags right there?
Absolutely not.
Okay, those are not wetlands flags right where the two proposed houses are?
Mr. Kenny, do you want to come forward since that's your work product and just address that question?
Good evening. I'm Bill Kenny. I'm the principal, William Kenny Associates in Fairfield. I'm a professional wetland science scientist, soil scientist and landscape architect. She were involved with mapping the wetlands and assessing the wetlands and developing this uh plan. There is some wetland loss here, but we are also creating wetlands, and it's a very unusual project. It's an existing farm. It was a tremendous amount of farming activities within the wetland, the barn built right into the wetland. And a lot of the animals in the wetland and uh so. The area that's being lost was a farm, what I want to call a farm wetland. It was a paddock for also uh a a number of different farm animals. So uh it's all centered around the barn that exists there today. And so the, one of the lots is right where the barn is, and the proposed house would be where the barn is. There are some wetlands immediately adjacent to that that are proposed to be eliminated. But to offset that, we're eliminating over a half acre of farm wetland. And restoring it to a natural wetland.
And the, this is a significant um contribution to open space. Because the property that's in the subdivision that the two houses are, is how many acres versus the open space donation?
You mean the two lots?
Yeah.
Now, what are the two lots? The two lots, I believe, are approximately under a half acre total, and the the open space parcel is the balance of the piece, which is. Eight point one three acres minus the the half acre. So yet, you're right, it's considerable. Also.
I appreciate that. And it's the, are we supposed, I I'm trying to remember our regulations. Uh when we talk about that, this is obviously much more than ten percent of the property, so we're not worried about a proportion of that being wetlands. The whole eight acres is not wetlands, right?
Correct.
And um the wet, so I'm not gonna, if if it got approval from the wetlands agency, and this is significant open space, and it does contain some wetlands. That's good. I'm not gonna, obviously, I'm not going to challenge that. Um I just want to make sure that we're not affecting wildlife. Do we know if anyone's done a search with the National Diversity Database with the EP? Since we are going into a well, and maybe Mr. Kenny knows something about that. Wildlife.
Again, the act, yeah, so the activities within the wetlands are right around the barn, the existing structure. So there was no, no critical habitat. There are no um listed species uh in that area.
I'd also direct you to page eight of the um inland wetlands permit. Where in the staff, as a draft of the permit that was subsequently adopted, uh discusses at some length the environmental benefits here. One of which is what Mr. Kenny alluded to, which is the elimination of farm activities on the property. And goes in great detail in terms of how the such uh farm activities can affect stormwater runoff. But that's all laid out in the permit, but that is part of your record as well.
Okay, one last question for Mr. Kenny. Is this application using low impact development drainage system technique since it is so close to the wetland?
Yes, we are um using infiltration measures to collect and infiltrate water into the the ground. But the major benefit to water quality is really the elimination of that farming activity, which was in the wetland itself. As they had animals defecating and urinating right in the wetland and in not a controlled way.
Is there any biofiltration as part of the stormwater uh system, drainage system?
Uh there, it's, the lots are so small. We're, in lieu of doing that, we're creating new wetlands and restoring. We're planting over a hundred trees and taking that farm wetland and just creating all new habitat.
So you're creating basically a stormwater drainage type wetland. Be a sort of buffer between um the buildings and the rest of the wetland on the open space parcel?
Yes.
Okay, that I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Other questions? Anything else?
No, thank you very much for your kind attention.
Any member of the public wish to be heard on two twenty Panzi Road, anybody joining us in person, wish to be heard on this application? Seeing none, anybody joining us remotely or by phone, wish to be heard on this application? Road, if you're joining us by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. Simul, Ms. Harrigan, do you see anybody in chat or anything like that?
I I will call the commission's attention to one email that came in today that's generally in favor. The the neighbor had a question, which I was able to answer for her, but there is an email that you likely haven't seen, but it's posted to the file. That it's on the website.
Thank you. Let's call any member of the public wish to be heard on two twenty Panzi Road. There are none. I'll end the public comment portion of that application. Attorney Fallon, nothing further, I assume.
Further, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Moving on to ten seventy three North Benson Road, special exception application at Fairfield University for conversion of a. Orship of an existing building, former Dolan School of Business to student housing, related site improvements in the double A-zone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the uh commission. For the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm here to represent Fairfield University. With me on behalf of the university today is Mr. David Frazzanelle, who's our vice president of facilities. Just to give you some general background here, the structure, as you may know, was originally built by a consortium of local banks as a conference center. Operated independently of the university on a land ba- lease basis. Two-story wing, which is the subject of this application, comprised of sixty four. Hope comprised sixty four hotel rooms that were used by conference attendees. When the land lease terminated, the building reverted back to the university and served for some years as the Dolan School of Business. The new Dolan School of Business was built in two thousand and eighteen, and the subject building at that time remained largely unused. Approximately eighteen thousand square feet of the building was renovated in twenty twenty to become the media center. And the applicant is tonight requesting permission to renovate the story wing and adjacent lobby. To provide one hundred and eighty six beds for sophomore housing. Also, by way of background, in September of two thousand and eighteen, you will recall that the commission approved the construction of the housing development. Uh off of Round Hill Road now uh known as the Barnyard, across from Southwell Hall. Uh at that time, neighbors expressed concerns about a then proposed new parking lot. The university, in an effort to appease the neighbors, uh and as part of the process before this commission. Agreed to repurpose the sixty nine spaces in the lot associated with the old Dolan School of Business building. Uh is to be used for parking for the barnyard development. It was further agreed uh that when a use was established for this building, the former Dolan Ball. Uh the parking would be addressed with additional parking, uh albeit further uh re- removed. From the Round Hill Road neighbors. Uh while the proposed facility that we have is for sophomores. Who typically do not have cars on campus, the proposed addition, which you'll hear briefly about in a moment. Uh does provide for the additional parking that is part of the application, and that is done in response to the university's commitment. That was made to the commission to address parking uh as deemed necessary by the commission in this area of the campus. So the application simply is an application uh back for a change of use to the original residential use of the building. There are no significant exterior alterations to the building, other than the replacement of a lobby skylight. With a metal roof to reduce sky illumination, night sky illumination, and further allow the building to recede into the landscape site. From a zoning perspective, very simply, the neighbors will see in the future what they see today. Uh upon completion of this interior renovation, which will include, as you'll hear, provision for new sprinklers and things of that nature. The adaptive reuse reuse of the existing structure uh in the existing structure is consistent with our commitment to. Uh the environment by not adding demolition debris to landfills or consuming the amount of new materials associated with the entirety of the building. So to give you a brief background, I uh with regard to the matter, uh I'm going to ask, first of all. Uh Mr. Chris Cardenay of Lang- Langton Engineering to give you a brief overview of the site plan. Uh we have received a certificate, an inland wetlands per permit, certificate of wetlands conformance with regard to this matter. Uh we also did receive in October of twenty four, twenty twenty four, approval from the WPCA. That is part of your record. I submitted that uh with regard to the connection for these hundred and eighty six beds. And uh Chris, I'll just leave it to you to give a brief overview, if you would, of the site plan.
Sure. Uh someone going to pull up, trying CS one oh one, that's the site plan?
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan.
Thank you. Uh again, for the record, my name is Chris Cardenay. I'm a professional engineer with Langton Engineering. In terms of the site improvements, today there's a parking lot. In this uh proposal, both uh deletes parking as well as adds parking. So we have a net increase of parking of about seventy two spaces. Uh it's an extension of the existing lot. Um we're enhancing some of the drop off that's there today. We're expanding it. We're adding some electrical vehicle parking. Um and we're replacing some sidewalks. Um that's on the main side of the site, uh the main entrance. On the backside, we're increasing the loading area, um and we're adding a pedestrian walkway uh to to connect to the other. Uh pedestrian ways on campus. Uh if we could go to the next plan, which is CG one oh one, the great, thank you. Generally, grades stay the same. We're extending the the parking lot grades uh to the west. Right now, there's a knob uh which will involve some cutting. The top of the knob is about elevation eighty seven. Whereas the center of the new parking lot is around seventy five or so, so the parking will be below the knob. We have an uh increase in impervious area of about fifteen percent, and we're offsetting that by three uh infiltration systems. To deal with the three areas that are increased uh in impervious coverage. We're matching. We're decreasing uh floor rates for all storms up to, including the hundred year storm. And um pipes have been designed for a twenty five year design storm. That's generally the site improvements.
Thank you uh very much, Chris. Obviously, as I said, we did receive in a wetlands approval with regard to this, and the matter has been reviewed by the uh. Town Engineering Department. We're in compliance with any and all comments they make. At this point, I'd like to ask Matt Jurgens uh from Newman Architects. He'll give you a brief overview with regard to the architectural aspects of the matter, basically involving the interior floor plan renovations.
For the record of Matt Jurgens, uh on the first slide, you'll see, uh this is an overall footprint of the existing building. Uh the renovation project focuses on B one and C. Uh area A is the uh previous project uh discussed by uh John Salons of the Media Center. And area B is existing to remain as part of the plan. Uh if we can go to the next slide, we'll enlarge on B one and C. Um within B one is the lobby space with an entry on each side depicted by the arrows. Uh the arrow at the bottom of the page will be primary entrance for students uh from the north of the campus. And then C is uh the existing rooms, which will be converted to dorms. If we go to the next, uh it is a roof plan of the overall building. Uh as located on B one is the skylight infill. And then located in the center of. And then located in the center of C is a replaced a new DOAS unit that will be provided with a screen system on it.
That's it. Thank you. The spirit of the new approach here. Um, so that that's really the application. And we had a code enforcement on this on March five, two thousand and twenty-four. All those uh comments were complied with. Basically, you know, what we're doing here is this the the allowance of the conversion for the sophomore housing is driven by the desire to better use the entirety of the campus and evenly distribute our housing availability across the campus. Uh, we need the beds. The additional rooms will serve to alleviate crowding on campus, particularly in the rooms designated for first-year students, although this will be for second-year students. So it's part of our endeavor to, uh, you know, maintain a proper uh volume of uh on-campus housing, which is in everyone's desire. And uh the use is generally the same generically as it has been for many decades, as it will be used for residential purposes, along with the media center, which has been established since two thousand and twenty. So we'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have. I hope you will favorably consider the application.
Commissioner Randolph.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fallon. Two questions relating to issues that you addressed in the plans here. Um, could you um generally talk about the um replacement in any tree plantings? I see the planting schedule here, but I it's not clear on what's in that position. And then secondly, um, I see your lighting plan here. Um, could you confirm that you've got full cutoff fixtures? I don't see the lighting specs in here.
Right. Let me start with trees, uh, and I'll ask Chris if you could come up and address that. And Matt, you could be on the ready to address also the uh the question on the lighting.
Chris will be able to.
Oh, Chris, Chris will lighting. Chris is gonna do that too.
Yep. Okay, again, Chris Cardney for the record, and I'll start with the lighting. Uh, yes, they're full cutoffs, dark sky compliant lights. Um, in terms of the landscape plan, I don't believe we uh have that for a presentation graphic today, but we are adding uh a number of trees, particularly evergreen trees along the new pathways, um, along Baller Mine Road. Um, the plans show new trees going in. They don't show trees that are coming out, but obviously part of the site demolition of there's any trees or shrubs that are in the way of of any parts.
I I can share that.
We have, oh, there it is. Okay. Um, so uh the evergreens are on the top of the page on the north side of.
This one?
Yeah, those are the evergreen trees. Um, and then uh there are some uh shade trees as part of the parking improvements. Those are the large circles there.
Thank you.
Are there questions? Mission? Further?
The thing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
I'll post the initial presentation of this application. Open up the public comment, deserving any member of the public and person that wish to be heard on ten seventy-three North Benson Road. Come on up. Just state your name and address. I'm sorry, yeah. State your name and address for the record.
I'm Susan Pinzon. I live at five 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 Round Hill Road. Could someone use the mic?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just take that mic there and just put it up by your chin area, please.
My name is Susan Pinzon. I live at five fifty-five Round Hill Road. I am directly across the street from the business school on the hill. Um, I have a couple of things. One was about the lighting, and I believe the full cutoff is just the tops of the fixtures are cut off from light, but they're three hundred and sixty degrees around uh light, and one request would be if they could put blanking plates or shields on the backside of the lights that face um either Round Hill or Barlow Road, the ones that are on the perimeter, not obviously the middle of the parking lot, but the ones that are that no light would be the backsides of the light if it's like hitting where the field is or going towards Barlow Road, that would prevent some of the light from going into the the residents' homes that live around them. The other request would be from trees. I know that they're talking about evergreens, but they're on the interior side of campus, not on the exterior side. And I have talked to Dave Frazanelli. I know when they did the bathrooms, I also spoke about this. They park um very large box trucks underneath the lights at the current um uh parking lot. And what happens is those lights reflect back and they look like billboards from inside my house at night. So if they could also plant evergreen trees, because a lot of them have died or during some of the storms been taken down, along again the up on the to prevent us from seeing the parking lot and some of those lights, because that's it's elevated. And because it's up on a hill, and then those streetlights are fourteen feet tall, so they're taller than my house. So that light does definitely come down into the homes on Round Hill and I assume on Barlow Road as well. So if there could be some evergreens or some plantings there, wherever they could to prevent some of that light. And then the last request would be to put, um, and I know Dave Frazanelli had done this, we had talked about it. Another problem um had been with the cars, with the headlights of the cars. All those lights, especially when pickup time at the field, uh, they were just shining in my house. I was getting blinded by car parking or car headlights coming in there. So if they could put, he had put a berm up and the berm was just tall enough that the headlights, things like maybe on an SUV, that the headlights were covered, and that did make a huge difference with the the light pollution coming into our house. So those are my requests. Thank you.
Other members of the public wish to be heard of this application?
Hi, good evening. Can everybody hear me? Okay. Hi, I'm Brenda Katugno. I live at three zero five Barlow Road. Um, I had to put some things uh down on paper. If I promise you, it's not nearly as long as anything I've ever spoken to you before about. But dear TPZ commissioners, over the last nine years, there's been an enormous amount of building on Fairfield University's property. There have been at least two turf fields, a new Dolan School of Business, at least four new dorms housing thousands of students, a parking garage, additional parking scattered around the campus, the bathrooms and storage space on the field right in front of my home, plus an upcoming expansion at Fairfield Prep, and more I am sure I'm forgetting to include. Each project is presented at a different point in time, so it never really seems like it's all that much. This sophomore dorm dorm project and expanded parking lot was already in the works as you were discussing the bathroom project. The point is, it's a lot of building, and a lot of building means a lot of changes for the neighbors that surround the university. The most impactful changes have been an increase in water in people's homes and on their properties, an increase in lighting visible from their homes and in some cases into their homes. The illuminated sky and particularly in our corner of the campus, an unwelcome increase in the noise from the increase in unmonitored use of Barlow Field. Since we last met, three days after you passed the bathroom storage project in June, our property was flooded again during a rainstorm. Um, the cement bulkhead, Mr. Fallon assured you was the solution to our flooding issue that had been installed by the town to stop the pipe from Barlow Field uh from draining the field water towards our property had blown out from the field water trying to drain, leaving our property unprotected from the field's water drainage. Why this matters is because the additional parking lot is elevated and about two hundred feet away from the field that has caused flooding on ours and our neighbors' property. We have all heard the saying, water goes where it wants to go, and for the last nine years, that's been towards us. After our property was flooded again this summer, my husband and I hired an attorney and stormwater management engineer to determine the origin of the flooding and solutions to fix it. The stormwater management engineer's conclusion was that the installation of the artificial turf field is the cause of the flooding, primarily because artificial turf field is not considered to be impervious from a stormwater management point of view. We also became aware that not only aware that it only took approval from conservation and engineering to install a turf field where a natural field once was. If they're responsible for making these decisions, these departments should know that turf fields are considered impervious from a stormwater management point of view before they sign off on it. We ended up having a meeting with our attorney, our engineer, the town's attorney, one of their engineers, two members of the university staff, Mr. Fallon, and the university's engineer to discuss the problems of our and our engineer's solutions. While I can't go into the details about the meeting because it was Vegas rules, at our engineers urging, as a first option, it was recommended to install a certain type of expansion plug to block the pipe from draining into the catch basin across the street. If it fails and our property is flooded again, we'll have to revisit this and discuss the next solution. The plug is was installed in December, two thousand and twenty-four, and we have not had a significant rainstorm since then to test the new expansion plug that in theory should work. Since so much earth has been removed and moved and water has been aimed away from projects on the university's property and caused issues on their neighbors' properties, wouldn't it be prudent if prior to any new project that the university hire an engineering firm with a stormwater management engineer to work on their projects? An analogy that might help make this make sense is would you want a general practitioner conducting your brain surgery? During our last meeting, several of you commented on how you'd like to see better communications and relations between the university and its neighbors. We would like that too, but we've been getting a lot of lip service and issues we were able to get verbal agreement on from the university prior to the bathroom project have been mostly been taken back. Uh, we now have a new utility pole in front of our home, and they will not be addressing loud music on the field. I tried to tell you they're like a bad date where once they get what they want, promises are discarded. The university had an opportunity to build some goodwill with their neighbors and completely disregarded it, which brings me to ask, once the project, a project is completed, does anyone from the town follow up on what was approved versus what was actually built? There is a lot of discussion about adding landscaping and trees. Will someone follow up on that? Our primary concerns for this project are to make sure no more water comes towards our homes from moving, removing dirt that's located on higher ground so close to our homes. We don't want headlights shining into our homes or to see their commercial trucks from our front windows or to see the additional lighting they are adding. In the current parking lot, there are sixteen lights total. I think they're adding forty-six. My husband and I drove around campus last night and noticed a lot less lighting than is proposed for this new parking lot in just about every other lot on the property. Do all the forty-six new lights have to do with a new town with new town codes? Why are there fewer lights in the large parking lot by the entrance that is further up Round Hill Road? Uh, as for the lighting, it there is mention of full side cutoff facing the residential properties on Barlow Road. Does this mean the panels in the lanterns that face towards Bar- Barlow Road will be blacked out? At a minimum, if there needs to be so much light, will they commit to reinstalling the current berm around the perimeter of the entire lot and a perimeter of green giant trees around the parking lot as there is in that other lot further up Round Hill Road um facing Barlow Road? Um, so the lights are not visible to the neighbors. The great thing about trees is they also absorb water, so they would be, that would help a number of concerns. Lastly, we're concerned with the monitoring of the one hundred and eighty-six new neighbors. If university, if the university refuses to have campus security address our current noise complaints, then who are we, who and where are we to go to for help? We live here and work in our homes and have no place to go. We are neighbors and need to respect each other's rights to enjoy our property. Right now, that's not happening. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Evening.
Hi, my apologies. I didn't get to send this in advance, but I thought these printouts might be helpful. Um, so that you guys get a sense of the the area that we're looking at.
It's all the same, aren't they?
They're all different. Sorry. And at the top, so there are um.
No, that's fine. We'll look at them. Are you gonna refer to them or?
I will refer to them, uh, just kind of in general, though, just. Sorry, is that better?
Yeah.
Will those be put in the record?
I'll I'll email them over.
Yes, that's good. I normally hold them in a week.
Yeah, but sorry, I have um I have a medical condition with a tremor, so it won't work for me to hold it. I apologize.
No.
Um, okay, so my name is Betsy Lockhart. Um, I live at one one five Barlow, and I am across from Faber Hall and the um loading dock area for the proposed project. And just a few things I wanted to uh mention. As you know, Fairfield University has two hundred and ten acres and all of it is on a hill. And if I had to guess, the lowest point of the property is Farlow Road. In my estimations, there have been at least a dozen or so significant development projects uh at the university over the past ten years and and my neighbor down the street, she kind of gave you some details on some of them. Um, sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, so I am sure that some of these projects were presented as part of the university's master plan, but it seems many of these requests were submitted piecemeal by the university. And in terms of local government resources, I can't even fathom the sheer volume of work hours that collectively all of these requests have required of our local agencies and employees, but I'm sure the commission, you're well aware of the amount of work required to review and approve every single one of these requests from the university and listen to us talk about these things each and every time. But when you think about these projects, um, if you could please think about the acres of porous surface removed, the mature trees lost, the volume of natural drainage material that has been excavated away, especially at the Dolan School, the the new business school, which is right in the heart of this area. And know that each project has likely altered water flow patterns. Some of these projects, even after previous water flow patterns were put in place, um, are some of these projects even alter those water flow patterns that were put in place just a few years earlier. You can use the Quick Center parking lot as that example. They expanded the parking lot, took out trees, diverted water for that, then a few years later took those trees, uh, took part of that away to excavate the hill and put in another dorm. And while the business school was going in, and that was probably sending water that way. And we all know that water runs downhill and stormwater does not always adhere to its individual project plans. And regardless of where we want the water to go, it's gonna make its own path. And with so many requests in the hopper at one time, I have no doubt that the town resources must be overwhelmed operating in reaction mode, that they don't have the bandwidth to step back for a minute and think about the cumulative impact of all of these construction projects. It must be hard to keep track of where all the water is supposed to go versus where it is going, and that really scares me. Think about it. Think about all the construction projects you've recently worked on as a commission, and what do you think those cumu- cumulative impacts have had on the stormwater management at the university? So with regards to the Dolan Dorm Project, I'm sure you've seen the hundred-page stormwater report associated with this request, and I hope that you all understand it much better than I do. Uh, I actually used AI to try to help me understand what it was, and I'd be happy to share that with their thoughts on this whole project with you. Um, but uh, given the proximity of the Dolan Dorm to Barlow Road and the fact that the stormwater management report references multiple watershed areas, I think as neighbors, we deserve to know where the water is going and where it will go if this project proceeds as requested. So there are some photos that I sent that I handed out to you that just might be helpful. Um, there's aerial photos from Google from two thousand and eight of that sort of the lower quadrant of the campus. And then there's one from two thousand uh from twenty-four, so you can see really all of the buildings that have gone in there. Um, there's Bellar Mine Pond photo from two thousand and eight and two thousand and twenty-four, and if you look at the two side by side, I'm sure you'll notice there's a heck of a lot more water in two thousand and twenty-four than there was in two thousand and eight. And it hopefully gives you this, the idea that how much that pond has grown in size, and probably as you're thinking, where's that water coming from? Because it's, you know, it's just sort of a little drop. You see how it's dried up a bit, and now it, the pond is overflowing. What I hope you see in the photo, the most recent photo, is that there's a new storm drain right at the foot of the pond. That storm drain was upgraded just in the past couple of years, which my guess is to manage the overflow and keep the pond from flooding the roadway. which my guess is to manage the overflow and keep the pond from flooding the roadway. Where do you think that water was going? Is it the same network of other storm drains like the one request that the, that is referenced in this request? That water is going to come down from the loading dock area and the that is in the, in the watershed plan, that it's going to go towards Bellarmine Pond. So I want you to keep that in mind. Uh, next I would point you to the photos of the wooded area between Faber Hall and Barlow Road. For point of reference, it provides the only screening for Barlow residents. It is an area that is, it's wooded, but portion of the area is wetlands. And I don't even know how I would find out where that portion begins and where that portion ends. I know that it's not all woodlands, and if and when those trees die, Barlow residents will lose all of that screening. Um, there are photos there from twenty eighteen where you can get a sense of just how close it is to the, um, to Faber Hall. And then there are photos from last year, uh, which were taken after the new dorm was built, uh, into the side of the hill right behind Faber Hall. I think it was proposed as a Faber Hall addition, but it, it has its own name. It's a separate dorm. Um, and in the photos from last year, you can see there are now three drain pipes in a small stone wall. I've asked the question, where is that water coming from? And what's the volume of that water that's directed into the area and is it monitored by anyone? And I point this out because it's downhill from the Dolan New Dorm. So they're connected in these, there are three watershed areas that are referenced in this request. And in the request and in the chart, I don't see anything, and perhaps I'm wrong, that specifically mentions where that water will go once it goes through the network. But moving on to the, the other item that's on the watershed area is the stormwater detention base. I've included a photo of it from a couple of days ago. Uh, it's nestled in a group of trees that is really hard to see from Google Maps. So if you were to look at it, it's hard to see it. Um, but be aware, it is very close to an uphill from Barlow Road. It's almost on the property line, you know, on the property line. Love to know where that water goes and where does it drain to. I know they put in a fence around it, which is great because it was just open, an open pit for many years. Um, so I just want you to have those photos and hope they give you sense of the surrounding areas. Um, because that information didn't really seem to be in the request. So in my research that I was conducting, I discovered a few things. So as a neighbor, you know, that I
Make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Just because it's been most nine minutes now and again, we don't have any set time limits.
Okay. Yes, I know you're good.
No, but I mean, in the emphasis, you heard what we were talking about earlier. If you have other comments, if they're written especially, I would
If I could, if I could just point out to you that there were some comments from last year that um, in the meetings, that you know that there's been a history with the communication with neighbors. Yeah, I'm sure you're well aware of that. I think that there were more than a couple of comments at the meeting from June eleventh. One of them being, I'm also extremely disappointed in the lack of collaboration between the university and the neighbors. This request received this information two weeks ago. Saw when I, I had to search for the information and that this has been in the works since March. The school newspaper even wrote a story. Conference Center will be the new residence hall. Here's what we know. And it had images of the plans that came out in October. I was notified February seventh. I've put calls into conservation and engineering to help me get a better understanding of the hundred page report. And where does the water come from and where does it go? Both departments were very nice, very helpful, but they couldn't even recall the specifics. They didn't even know where the stormwater basin was. So I, my concern is that we've got, we've gotten to the point where we've got to have, you want to ask us, you know, we're, we're kept in the dark as to what the impact of the stormwater management program may have on us as a result of projects like this. But wherever the water comes from and wherever it goes, it's not going to stop at the broad, at the Farlow property line. And so I respectfully ask that the commission give us the opportunity to learn more from town engineers and the conservation department. So we as neighbors can understand where the water goes and then give us a chance to work with the, have a collaborative conversation as requested by some of the commissioners in the past. Have that conversation with the university about the more specific concerns that we have related to the actual excavation, the expansion of the loading dock, and then move the project along. But the fact that students are getting the plans in October and the neighbors who should have a say in this are getting it two weeks in advance. And the town resources can't even answer the questions without them getting more information. So that's it.
And anything else, please feel free to submit it, uh, to our email address.
And so how does that process? May I ask how that process then works? Because
It's any emails and evidence submitted to the
Yes.
zoning email address, it gets forwarded to us.
Okay. And then is there, do you guys actually respond to residents?
We will respond to an email. That's not appropriate for us. Um, we, we review all written submissions same equal weight as if somebody came in person and talked. So, so in the extent that you have anything else, please submit it.
Okay. And then, so then you'll make the decision in your next meeting. Is that basically how it goes?
I'm not sure when it'll get put up on the next.
So if I have questions, so I am working with, um, engineering that I've started conversations with engineering. They, the ones who, you know,
You mean our town engineer?
Town engineer to find out.
Those will get part of the record, so to speak, but anything you submit to ours, our, our email address will be made part of the record.
Okay. So how quickly after this do you make a decision?
And it will be potentially on, or probably not next regular meeting, but probably in March, Mr. One.
Well, it's gonna be up to you. Does it, as soon as the hearing closes tonight, it'll be on the next agenda, but whether or not you're ready to vote on it, we'll be
It could be ready for voting next month, next Tuesday, but that's up to the commission as to whether we have enough information.
Okay. And that, so I'll, I'll let engineering know that and can they be in contact with you if they?
I think we'll be reaching out to them.
Okay.
Yeah, throughout.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Brown has a question.
Um, no, I think any, at this point, Commissioner Brown, let's, um, she's going to submit things via the email. We can reach out to our town engineer if needed. So let's bounce to the rest of the public.
Well, if she submits information after the hearing closes, will that be accepted by us?
Is there, well, ma'am, do you have additional information?
I have this, my specific questions, I can send those to my specific concerns about the loading dock area and where that excavation. Cause that is the next
Much more time would you have for that?
Um, I, I I don't want to bore you with it. I mean, I
Oh, I, but I also wanted, I mean, I would like to close this hearing too, but if you had, I didn't realize you had specific questions. That would be pertinent for now, I would think, right, Attorney?
Well, there wasn't really any discussion about the, the specifics from the university about that part of the project.
She has questions, she says. Why don't you come up and ask the questions then? Cause we can address this now. I thought you had a
So will the footprint of the loading dock area be expanded? Um, they have to
Put your microphone back on.
Sure.
Sorry.
That's okay.
You can just limit what you're saying to specific questions about the application.
Uh, so will the footprint of the loading dock be increased? Uh, they need to, according to the plan, it said that the loading dock area will get a catch basin that will then drain around the back of the building to the basin. But it doesn't really show that, um, how that happens, uh, because it's got to go around and so how much, how much of it will go down the hill? How much of it will, which both hills, because there is the Bellarmine, how much will go towards Bellarmine? Then the driveway and how much will go to the basin? The, um, the, how much, uh, excavation and how many trees will be removed from that whole area for the, um, for the walkway? Um, it looked like there was pretty extensive tree and growth area that's going to come out of there. Uh, the the flow pattern from the drive, uh, from the parking lot. I assume that's tilted back towards the, um, towards Bellarmine Road and Pond. Um, so that basin, what, what's that volume of excavated material for the parking lot area? It seemed like it was like ten feet down and how many feet across?
Just if you could repeat the question.
Sure. So how much, uh, what's the volume of the excavated area? Or for both the areas, for the loading dock area and for the parking lot area? Uh, will the university be using the, uh, Coughlin Road, Round Hill Road entrance for the trucks that come in and out for the excavated material? I ask that because, uh, typically you have used the Barlow Road entrance, uh, for excavation. And this seems closer and would be kinder to the residents who had to endure all of that. Um, the lighting and in the back, I, I would just say piggyback on what my neighbors had in terms of their concern around the lighting, uh, if that can be applied to the backside of the property as well. Uh, because keep that in mind that it is elevated and it does, uh, while it does face Bellarmine Road, uh, or no, sorry, Bellarmine Road, the, the drive, yes, the driveway itself, it does face the neighbors as well. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Any other member of the public wish to be heard in this application? Start in person again, continue in person. Seeing no one, Ms. Harrigan, anybody sign up online? Anybody joining us remotely or by phone, wish to be heard in this application? Doing by phone, please press star six times yourself. Last call, any member of the public in person, remote or by phone? Member of the public wish to be heard on this application, ten seventy three North Vincent Road. Hearing nothing further, I'll close the public comment portion. Fallon rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think what we'll start doing is, uh, I'm going to recall, uh, Chris Cardeney, uh, who is from Langen Engineering. And I want to specifically address, uh, before I address other remarks, but the questions that were just posed by, uh, Ms. Lockhart. So Chris, first question as I have it is the, the footprint of the loading dock area. Is it being expanded? And if so, in what manner?
Um, so again, Chris Cardeney for the record, um, the plan shows, uh, the grading plan here shows an expansion of the, of the loading area. Um, the loading area is higher than the adjacent road. So the expansion is actually filling in a slope. Um, the driveway itself has minimal excavation or filling. It's really matching what's there. Um, all of the drainage is directed back there into a catch basin. That is the low point. There's a curb there, so it's not running over the embankment. Um, all that water gets collected and into an infiltration system and then back into the network that's there today. All of these networks, uh, drain to a wetlands to the east. And all of the drainage areas, there's three watersheds as part of this project. Each watershed is reduced, uh, the runoff is reduced for all storms up to a hundred year event. If we look at combining all three watersheds for the impact of the project, um, adding all of those, there's a reduction of twenty percent of runoff from the project for all storms up to the hundred year storm. So leaving the site as it is today will be less than proposed is less than what it is today.
Could you repeat that, please?
Um, all the drainage, uh, leaving the site proposed is less than what's today.
By twenty percent?
By twenty percent for a hundred year storm.
Thank you. Uh, there was a question with regard to the excavation, uh, and tree removal associated with the walkway. Could you address that, please?
Yeah, I don't have the number of trees that would be removed. Uh, the intent would be to avoid trees where possible, um, through there. It's not the intent to clear cut that. Uh, and then put the path in.
There was a question with regard to the volume of excavated area uh, associated with the loading dock and the parking lot itself. Could you address that?
Yeah. And I said previously that, uh, the expansion of the loading dock is really a fill condition because the loading dock today is above the roadway. So we would be expanding that plain, if you will, and filling in and grading the slope accordingly. So it's more of a fill situation than it is an excavation.
Okay. And I'll address the lighting question in the context of my other closing remarks. And the other question I think was in terms of access for purposes of construction. You know, we would intend to use Barlow Road. We think that's the most expeditious and efficient way to do it. Um, obviously if we took it somewhere else, we'd only receive concerns from other neighbors, but that's our present plan, but we'll certainly take that under consideration. Thanks, Chris. So let me just go through the comments. I might as well start with the comments that Ms. Lockhart made. I mean, first of all, let me just say something as far as the university doing things piecemeal. We all do things piecemeal, but we're a dynamic institution in a very dynamic age for higher education. And therefore we have to be responsive to the needs of our students, to the needs of our prospective students. And we do try to do that in a careful manner with good planning. We do have a master plan. We submit that to you periodically. And on occasion, we need to address immediate needs such as this need here where we are in need of these additional beds in an existing building that has previously been used for residential purposes. But each time we come before you, your app, like this application is carefully, each application is carefully reviewed by this commission. And prior to that, it is reviewed by your staffs in both your inland wetlands agency and conservation department and the engineering department. That was done here. Uh, and I think if you look at the, the reports and the plans that have been filed by Langon Engineering, you'll see that this has been a very comprehensive application, uh, that has received the approval of the inland waters and engineering department. We've always implied that the, they're engineering best practices. And I would say to Ms. Lockhart, and I'll say this publicly and you talked to me after the meeting. I would be happy to arrange, you can certainly talk to the town engineers, but I'd be happy to put you in contact directly at your convenience with, with Mr. Cardeney and his colleagues. And they can sit down with you and they can go over in detail in engineering speak better than I can so that you are comfortable that what we are doing has not only been totally vetted by town departments, but is top notch. Okay? And, and before we leave tonight, I'll make sure you all get in contact. Okay? Um, and that would address, I think, the questions with regard to your general trust, questions with regard to where the, the war, the water is going and how our system, our intricate system of drainage does work resulting in, as Mr. Cardeney just testified, in this instance, a, a, an overall twenty percent reduction of offsite runoff during a hundred year storm. And I would also point out that other than Ms. Cugno's, uh, concerns, which I'll talk about in a minute with regard to the field and the impacts that there was concern that that had on her property, we've never received a complaint of any neighbor with regard to drainage related issues, uh, in any way that I'm aware of. So I, 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 I do hope, and, and with regard to communication, communication, and I think those of you who've been on the commission for a while, has always been a hallmark of the university. And we do that not only because it's the right thing to do from a community standpoint, but we honestly do that because you expect it. And, and the reason that I think Ms. Lockhart didn't get notice in October, like so many of her neighbors did, like Ms. Cugno and the Pinsons and so on, is it was perceived that, that based upon where she is, this would not have impact on her because she has no visual impact with regard to this. But we did send out a letter in October about the same time that student newspaper was published, uh, letting our neighbors know and inviting them to contact us if they had any questions. And we didn't receive any response at that time. Um, let me talk about this, uh, uh, Katugno's comments. I, I'm afraid we're living in a bit of an alternate universe, she and I, with regard to this. Um, this is an application about a conversion of an existing building partially that was used for residential purposes for many decades for other residential purposes, which happens to be student housing. It's really not about the field. We all lived through the comfort station application. Uh, but since it was brought up, let's talk about it. She accurately states what has occurred since we were in front of you last. Mr. Green, who's here tonight on another matter, and myself met with the town attorney, Mr. Baldwin, our engineer. our engineer, Mr. Green's engineer, and Mr. Scott Lehman, the town engineer. And as a result of that onsite meeting, a determination was made that she describes with regard to the modifications to be made. Those were done. I, I met, I, at another matter with Mr. Lehman just two weeks ago. He confirmed everything was done. As Ms. Katugno puts, uh, uh, rightly put it, it's in place. We're all expecting it's going to work and resolve our problem. It has to this point. If something occurs in terms of a storm where we have a problem, then we'll meet again on the property. But to the extent that you heard nights of testimony about the impact of the field, of the artificial field, although we dispute that frankly, we did meet in good faith with everybody as I just described. She accurately described the meeting and the fact of the matter is we'll continue to be responsive in any way that we need to be to the Katugno's concerns with regard to any impacts to their property associated with the field. And, and right now we're hopeful based upon the input of three engineers, ours, theirs, and the towns, that we've resolved the concern. The new utility pole, at the time of the hearing, we told you that we were committed to pursuing that with UI. We did that. We documented that. UI won't move the pole. And there's not much we can do. And you'll recall at that hearing, I made that caveat. I said, well, we'll aggressively address that with them, but we, we can't be sure they would allow us to do it. And they wouldn't. The lighting is the real interesting thing. This new lighting is going to have a dramatically improved and better eh, situation in terms of impact to the offsite neighbors than currently exists. Why? First of all, we're going to be totally night sky compliant. We're going to be cut off fixtures and we're reducing the wattage to further ensure we won't have any offsite trespass. But when you reduce the wattage, guess what? You need more poles. So that may be why when the Katugno's drove around the campus last night, they saw fewer light poles than we're proposing, but that's because we're proposing state of the, state of the art lights that are going to ensure there'll be less wattage and there won't be any light trespass. This application is totally compliant, both with regard to night sky and your regulations. Lastly, in terms of Ms. Pinzen, um, uh, we, we certainly will provide the extra trees that she requests. That could be made a condition of approval that we have to submit a revised landscaping plan addressing the concerns with regard to the trees. And I hope my previous comment addressed the lighting concerns that she has because in fact, we, we don't need any back, you know, things that, these are all going to be totally full cut, uh, fixtures, which will not allow any bleeding offsite with regard to the light. And as I said a minute ago, they are going to be, um, less in wattage and therefore by nature have less impact. So is it simply an application? We got a building that's been there for like 40 years. It was used for one of another statement as a hotel, uh, for many of those years, for most of those years. Uh, what we want to do now is convert it to provide more on campus housing, uh, reduce overcrowding on the campus and ensure that we're going to be able to provide on campus housing for all of our students, which is a desire townwide. Uh, and, and, and we're doing that in an existing building. We've been careful to address any, any considerations with regard to drainage. We have the approval from wetlands and co- and conservation, excuse me, wetlands, conservation and the town engineering department. And, uh, we hope that you'll take all that in consideration. Having said that, we are absolutely happy, uh, and, and would welcome an opportunity to sit down with other neighbors, including Ms. Lockhart and anyone else with our engineers to go over exactly what we have designed, what the town has approved and how it integrates and fits into a system of drainage on this campus that has resulted in, to our knowledge, never having a flooding related problem, except the ones that the Katugno's had concerns with as far as, uh, the impacts allegedly of the art of, of the uh, artificial turf field. And we've addressed that with them in good faith. So we hope you'll approve the application so we can use this presently vacant space uh, to have, provide much needed additional beds for our students. And we thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Braun has a question.
Commissioner Braun?
Yes, I have a question, uh, Attorney Fallon about trees.
Yes.
Okay. If you recall, on the Faber dorm expansion, we put a condition of approval to replace any loss of trees or shrubs with an equivalent amount somewhere else on campus. I don't know if that was done. I think that's still under construction. Um, but I'm not asking for an update on that. But given that neighbors seemingly on all sides are asking for tree cover in the form of evergreens, I guess, is that something that's doable? I don't know how many trees are going to have to be cut because I don't think they can predict that right now.
Well, well, clearly, as I said, m- m- Mrs. Pinzen articulated a, a desire and a request for additional screening in the specific area that she addressed. And we are committed by my comments to that as a condition of approval. Beyond that, you know, we're, we're, we're ready to cooperate with the commission, but that's, that's what I heard this evening. And our answer to that is affirmative.
And the berm, um, I'm not sure where exactly the berm would be, but is that, I know you put the berm on Round Hill Road when you did another dorm farther up Round Hill Road, um, or that was Round Hill Road. Yeah. Um, that seems to have worked pretty well. I've driven by there. I don't know exactly where the berm would be here, but is that something that's doable also?
I didn't understand Ms. Pinzen's comment. I thought she was addressing the, uh, the, the fact that the berm as we constructed it has in fact alleviated it, eh, eh, as planned, the concern, some of the concerns that she had. But so I, I don't think there's any need for any additional berm at this point in time. I do, we did hear her testimony this, this evening about additional tree screening and we'll do that.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Um, would you go ahead, Chris? Chris Cardeney would just like to further address the commissioner's, uh, eh, question on the berm.
Uh, on the question of the berm, um, and I said this previously with the grading plan, there's an existing knoll out there that's at elevation 87. The new parking is going to be around elevation 75. So we're almost 12 feet below, uh, what you would see from the street, uh, with the new parking.
There is in fact an additional, a natural berm.
It's a natural berm. Right. It comes up and it goes down where the, where the, uh, parking will be.
Thank you, Chris.
Final questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the hearing on this item?
Moving on to last three items, right? 2179, 21, uh, 2199 Post Road, 29 Place, Application of Sunshine Acquisition LLC to establish Center Design Business District on land presently zone design commercial district zoning regulation amendment, application of sunshine group acquisition LLC to amend sections 12.3.16, 12.7, 25.7.9, 28, and 31.2.16 of the zoning regulations. 79, 2199 Post Road, 29 Fairfield Place, special permits and coastal site plan application of sunshine acquisition group LLC pertaining to a proposed mixed residential build. This is continued from the 12th, December 10th and January 28th. We, we left off with Attorney Green's presentation. Um, I would have you, Attorney Green, I would, why don't you finish up with what you have? And I can final, uh, ask for a final public comments if there's any. I think that's where we should go off of that. That's okay. Um, I think, and I don't know this, that Attorney Green had yielded to the most of the public, if not all of them. Um, after Attorney Green, I will add again to the public to see if there's any new members of the public that wish to be heard. I'd ask who have already spoken out to, come up and be supportive. Um, let's see where we are after Attorney Green. First time do you think you have left?
Uh, hopefully about 20 minutes.
While he's getting set up, do we have any members of the public in person that would like to be heard? Not speaker, yeah. Okay. One, two, three. Any members of the public who are joining us remotely, um, please sign up in the chat room. That would be helpful. They, uh, were, order. Good evening, Attorney Green.
Good evening, uh, Chairman, uh, members of the commission. I don't know how many of you uh, brought the materials that I had distributed at the last hearing, so I brought a few extra copies.
That'd be great. Thank you. This is all which you've previously provided.
Same, same thing. Yes, I've provided.
No, no, it's fine. Just wanted to inspire everybody else listening. What we're getting is what we've already seen.
Could you identify the materials we're talking about?
Um, uh, for the record, uh, Joel Green of the, uh, Law Offices of Green and Gross. I represent, um, a number of residents, um, in the area of the proposed development as we've discussed. Um, at the last, uh, public hearing, I, uh, at conclusion of the hearing, we're close to it. I had, uh, distributed, uh, documents to the commission and I know, I believe, uh, Commissioner Braun, I believe you had received them as well, uh, at that hearing. So I'm just distributing the same documents.
So as you go through, just identify what you're talking, what you're discussing.
They're all posted on the materials on the website.
Okay.
Want to specify the file name?
There's, there's a, there's a file folder under this application labeled Attorney Green Submittals 12825.
Thank you.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe, uh, just picking up, um, when, when I was last, uh, before the commission, I think on January 28th. Um, I had, we had had a discussion, uh, and I had started just to identify, um, some of issues that I believe are sort of distractions in terms of uh, the commission's considerations of, um, these applications. And, uh, we had talked about the fact that there is a, a pending, um, application relating to the same property. Um, I also wanted to emphasize once again, and I know that several members of the public have brought up the fact that, uh, the pending draft of the plan of conservation and, and development is really at this point a distraction in my view in terms of this application. And obviously it has not been adopted. It's obviously interesting in terms of the discussions that the commission, uh, may have had and, you know, sort of the aspirational, uh, uh, elements of the new P O C D. But once again, the, uh, 2016 document, uh, is the P O C D at the moment. Uh, another area that I just always have to touch on because every application I sit on, someone brings up code review and I just can't emphasize enough that code review is really a nullity in terms of the commission's consideration of this application. It is non-binding. It's really to provide, uh, uh, an opportunity for developers to get early feedback. Uh, there are no development rights established. It's not appealable. It's not binding on anyone. It's not binding on the applicant. So positive comments that may be made in that report are, are a nullity and have nothing to do with this application. Uh, and there is a statute on that, which is, um, section seven dash 159B, which specifically says that pre-application review shall not be binding on the applicant or any authority, commission, department, agency, or other official. So, uh, when, uh, counsel for the applicant typically speaks glowingly of the code review, there's a lot that happens between code review and the hearing. The use by the applicant of comparative metrics pointing to other towns and the heights of buildings is similarly, uh, something that I would urge the commission to disregard. It is a distraction to cherry pick heights in different towns in Fairfield County. Uh, I would just su- suggest, first of all, that different towns use different measures, uh, and methods of measurement and measuring the heights of buildings. As I've seen so many towns, there are different contexts. There are different locations. There are, some are in transitional areas, some aren't. And so while the applicant may point to a town that allows 50 foot buildings or 60 foot buildings, that really should not come, it's not a consideration under the standards for adopting and amending zoning regulations. Uh, I suggested, and I'm going to move along quickly here, uh, expecting, uh, in view of the discussion that you've had this evening.
Say what you need to say, though. I mean, quick is good.
I will.
Be complete.
Let me just, I'd like to just offer, interrupt my presentation for a short footnote. I am increasingly confronting the case of Patty versus Town of Wilton in cases where an applicant in an appeal will claim that unless an item is raised at the public hearing, sometimes you can be foreclosed from raising it on appeal. I would bring that case to the commission's attention. I'm sure that Attorney Pierce is familiar with it.
Patty, P A T T Y? Or it's Town of Wilton? No, what'd you say?
Yes, Town of Wilton. It's Wilton Planning and Zoning Commission. And that is a case where, uh, the court, under certain circumstances will find that unless an item is raised and explored at public hearing, that under certain circumstances, a party can be foreclosed from raising it on appeal. So there is a tension between.
Oh, thank you. That's helpful. No.
All right. So that's just a small public service announcement. Getting back, getting back to it. You know, you have all of these people who are here tonight because they are so deeply concerned about the impacts of both, I suppose, the text amendments and, uh, as they're embodied in this development. And, uh, once again, and as we discussed, um, in the context of the Stilson Road application, the applicant talked about their project and they showed you all of these aspects of their project and the project they hope to build. They offered so little about what the impact of the text amendments are on the other, uh, commercial design districts in town. And I, I believe I, and, uh, I would just suggest, first of all, that the commission does not really have a basis based on the record in this case to understand what the impacts of these regulation text amendments are. And I'm going to go through some of them and highlight them, but just there's a, it was just really about what's going to happen at Fairfield Place and Post Road that the applicant focused on and how it impacts their development. Uh, this is kind of, as I pointed out, the tail wagging the dog in the sense that you're taking the NDBD with the downtown, basically that downtown district, and you're putting it on this small point seven two acre piece of property in the middle of a DCD. And it's, it's sort of interesting. And meanwhile, there are all these amendments to the neighborhood design business district that's left behind up the road. So, uh, in terms of the text amendments here, and to put this in context, I think there was some discussion and it could have been on this matter, it could have been on Stilson Road, where there's sort of this idea that we can do what we want on text amendments, basically, because we're acting in our legislative capacity. And the, the answer is yes and no. And I would just, uh, point the, uh, commission to section eight dash two. And it's very significant for this application because it talks about the standards for adopting zoning regulations in subsection A. And it says that regulations shall be adopted, but, but this same section applies to amendments for whenever you're acting in a legislative capacity. And where this application fails is, for example, where it says that they shall be adopted in adopting zoning regulations, the commission and the regulations shall in paragraph two, it says be designed to subparagraph A, lessen congestion in the streets. That's specifically in the statute. B, secure safety from fire, panic flood and other dangers. You've heard so many of these residents talk about how narrow these streets are and how they will be blocked if there's any, uh, increase in parking, uh, on them. And, and obviously, uh, we're going to spend some time talking about parking tonight. The regulations should be designed to promote health and general welfare. Uh, they should facilitate the adequate provision for transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks and other public requirements. So the point is that there are a lot of standards that this application falls short on, um, under the Connecticut general statutes. And, uh, once again, the, uh, the, sort of the, the impacts have not been fleshed out by the applicant. And I went through their traffic study again. And all that, uh, all that was done in their traffic study in terms of sort of this parking impact that we've already spent a lot of time on, and we're going to spend a little more time on, was this suggestion that uh, within 15 feet of either side of the driveway, there shouldn't be parking allowed. And, uh, within 15 feet of the intersection. And other than that, the applicant really hasn't addressed. And other than that, the applicant really hasn't addressed sort of the off-site impacts of this project in any meaningful way in, in their traffic report. This would be a great opportunity, if I may just introduce one speaker in the context of my presentation, who's Heather Frank, who's going to speak to this very parking issue with the chairman's permission. It would, it would, it would really, this would be a great moment to insert this.
It's part of your presentation, sure. Somebody speak now?
Oh, she, you raised her hand earlier to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Fine.
I also spoke with Emmeline and requested that a video be played during the presentation, during my speech. Not immediately, I want to say a few things first, if that's possible.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Earlier today.
I, I heard your name, can you just say your name and address again, please?
Heather Frank, 70, it's F R A N C.
It's eight minutes.
Eight minutes.
72 Lindbergh Street.
Why don't we do this, let's have, whenever you feel that you want to show it, we can show it. Wouldn't want to show the whole thing, I don't think, if we need to.
I've seen it, Mr. Chairman, I have no objection if it not be shown, if you, you're all going to have it. I think you'll address it in my remarks.
Okay, um, I mean, if it's pertinent to kind of go through quickly, but I, you know, the whole, that's maybe a bit much, but.
Can you speed it up to one and a quarter?
We're in a quarter minute?
Yeah.
Maybe, that's fine too, but why don't we say what you're going to say, then, when we're going to, the video, we can.
Just let it roll.
Okay. It's your presentation, so let's.
Okay, great, can, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
This further, closer.
All right, if you have something in writing, it's easier to submit things like that in writing and touch upon some highlights. I'll leave that to you, but just be mindful of time against that.
Well, we could, but I'd rather speak to it.
Okay.
And so let me just, let me just do this and we'll, we'll figure it out as we go, please. Again, dear Mr. Noonan and members of the commission, my name is Heather Frank, I reside at 72 Lindbergh Street. I've been a proud member of the Fairfield community since 1995. Today, I speak for the first time as a neighbor deeply invested in the well-being of our beloved neighborhood. I want to share a glimpse of what life is like on Lindbergh Street and Lindbergh Court, where we are more than just residents, we are a close-knit community that feels like family. We regularly host block parties for which we secure street closure permits to foster a sense of togetherness. During these gatherings, our children play, ride bikes, draw with chalk, enjoy food, dance, and engage in water fights. These moments of connection are the heart of our community. Last year, neighbors Tom and Erica Stokes, along with the Kennelman family, created the Lindbergh Street Lindbergh Court Community Garden, which is now a formerly registered pollinator pathway. Twenty of us came together to plant and nurture this garden, further strengthening the bonds among us. On summer afternoons and mild winter days, we gather outside to watch our children play, ride bikes, and catch up. We are a thriving, tight-knit community that contributes to the larger town of Fairfield. I have attended previous TPZ meetings related to spot-on dog daycare and the current, and this current proposal. In those meetings, I heard you commissioners emphasize the importance of facts and expert testimony in raising concerns on any project. Tonight, I speak not only as a concerned citizen, but as a recently retired police officer with serious reservations about the safety risks associated with this project. Throughout my 28-year career as a police officer, I responded to a vast number of calls, many of which include vehicular collisions. To provide context, if I handled just one collision per week, that would amount to approximately 1,400 collision reports over my career. In reality, I investigated far more. The more common collisions I encountered were intersection or junction-related. On such location, one such location is the intersection of Lindbergh Street and the Post Road, which I have long observed to be hazardous. The root cause is simple. When cars are parked in front of 2179 or 2199 Post Road, they obstruct the line of sight for any driver attempting to exit Lindbergh Street. By line of sight, I mean the critical visual range a driver needs to assess oncoming traffic. The line of sight or visual access refers to the imaginary line connecting the driver's eyes to the object they're trying to observe. From 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM, the Post Road and surrounding streets are frequently gridlocked. As you know, the eastbound lane of the Post Road from Sasko Hill to Mill Plain Road is just one lane. On normal days, traffic is heavy, and on Fridays or holidays, it often becomes a parking lot. Where this project's current scale and inadequate parking, traffic and congestion will only worsen. Just the other day, overflow parking stretched along the Post Road in front of Mr. Andres' property, blocking my line of sight when I attempted to turn right from Lindbergh Street onto the Post Road. I could not see the front grille of an approaching vehicle until it was less than two car lengths away. This is not enough time to safely stop a 3,000 to 5,000 pound vehicle. It took several minutes for me to safely exit Lindbergh Street, and even then, I was not fully confident in my ability to do so because of vehicular obstructions. Now imagine the same scenario where vehicles are now constantly parked in front of the proposed building. A resident is attempting to exit Lindbergh Street, turning right onto the Post Road, but their line of sight is obstructed. The driver believes the road is clear, pulls out, and a, and a collision occurs because they couldn't properly gauge the oncoming traffic. This is especially at night, this could easily lead to a collision. To make matters worse, the driver exiting Lindbergh Street, the resident who pays taxes in this town, would be at fault for the collision and could face an infraction for failure to yield right away at a juncture, Connecticut General Statutes 14-246A, simply because their view was obstructed. The illegally parked vehicles could receive parking tickets, but the driver exiting Lindbergh Street would be at fault and left with the responsibility for any damage or injuries caused in the collision. What does this have to do with Mr. Andres' project? Everything. The lack of adequate parking will inevitably lead to these types of dangerous scenarios. I know this because I've investigated similar ones throughout my career. The proposed 71 parking spaces are insufficient to accommodate all the vehicles associated with this building, residents, visitors, employees, and customers of the 90-plus-seat restaurant, the proposed coffee shop, and two other businesses. Inadequate parking will frustrate visitors, and it is almost certain that these vehicles will line the curb in front of the project whether to pick up a quick coffee, drop off passengers, wait for tenants, and pickups such as Uber Eats. Resulting in numerous, this will result in numerous dangerous sequences of events that I already described.
That's it.
Mr. Devin Santa previously reported that the 71 parking spots will not adequately cover parking for the building, and his professional knowledge and report demonstrated this. As he previously stated, the overflow of vehicles will clog the Post Road, Lindbergh Street, Fairfield Place, and beyond severely impacting the daily lives of those who live here. Some of us may recall a public service commercial from the 1970s warning about dangers of traveling too fast through populated neighborhoods filled with parked vehicles. From the operator's standpoint, a child's ball suddenly bounces out in, from in-between parked vehicles, forcing the operator to slam on the brakes as the child dashes out after it. An increase in vehicles congesting our streets, restricting the ability of drivers to navigate safely, will put our children playing outside in danger. Well, let's take a look at a visual representation of what our new reality will be. This is where I would like to show the video. Okay. So this is Lindbergh Street, we're looking out toward the Post Road. Obviously, we've placed our cars on either side of the road to show what this visually will look like. A neighbor's car coming down and another neighbor's car coming from the Pine, South Pine Creek part of Lindbergh Court, and they meet. And there is no room on either side to pass by, so someone has to back up, pull into a driveway, and turn around. As you can see, the.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I just want to make sure I heard correctly and the record's clear. So these, these vehicles were parked on the street to sort of demonstrate what you feel the off-site situation, but this was not an existing condition, this was sort of a, a stage exhibit.
Yes.
Right, that's all I want to make sure of.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So now we're, we're showing, we're demonstrating what it would be like for pedestrians to walk without a sidewalk through traffic, parked cars, while traffic is also traveling on the roadway. Now we have another car coming toward, again, the car attempting to travel toward Lindbergh Court and one thought, one vehicle traveling toward Lindbergh Street. Now this one is interesting because while we were setting this up, actual traffic of this older model Jeep Cherokee attempted to pass through, decided he didn't want to, that he saw traffic coming toward him and quickly turned in and around in one of our neighbor's driveways. You know, you'll see when he backs out, this vehicle thought he was pulling in, but instead, he pulls into the driveway and backs out. So this vehicle traveling toward the Post Road has to stop without, so they don't have a collision. Now, in this video, we again came out after the snow to demonstrate what traffic would be like after a plow has come through and snow has further narrowed our roadway. Cars are parked along the street. You can see the snow is spilling out into the street, making more, more difficult to pass.
I just ask.
Of course.
Are cars occasionally parked in the very position that these cars are shown?
Not as often as we depict here, but yes.
Okay.
Could you identify the exact location as you go through the video?
Lindbergh Street.
Yes, Commissioner, this is the area, the point of where Lindbergh Street actually meets Lindbergh Court. Now we're moving on to Fairfield Place, which Devin Santa has already explained in his previous presentation that this street is not actually completely wide enough to be labeled a street or road. If, if the measurement falls below the, the standard. As you can see, because Lindbergh appears to be a bit wider, this is more narrow and two cars are parked on the street. The middle car, the traveling vehicle, is having difficulty passing through. Now, this is a second SUV, a bit wider, that looks like it's having more trouble passing through. Again, on Fairfield Place, we've introduced pedestrians walking in the street, excuse me, with two cars parked on either side of the roadway.
Again, this is demonstrative of if the cars are parked on both sides. It's not necessarily, this is how it is a normal day.
For Fairfield Place, it is because of the overflow from Grohl Britannia. So this is often, on Fairfield Place, an accurate representation.
It overflowed now.
Is there no parking sign there that everyone ignores?
So now you've got a wider vehicle that simply cannot make it past.
It's all up in this front of the.
It's her, it's her turn, please.
As you can see how narrow this creates the street to be. No sidewalks on the street, and this street has numerous families with small children. Now, a normal resident attempting to back out of their driveway onto Fairfield Place, cars, vehicles parked in the area, this is what will occur. And has already, based on overflow traffic simply from the Post Road and, and Grohl Britannia.
How close is this to the Post Road?
I didn't make a measurement, Commissioner Braun, but as you can see, the white car at the very end is the Post Road.
Okay, thank you.
You want to repeat?
We can watch the rest if that's okay, unless you think.
Yeah, we can, we can push through this.
Thank you.
Am I fast forwarding? Um, yeah, do you want to fast forward a little bit to show, this is what it's showing again, how narrow it is.
Couldn't make it.
Car can't make it, so imagine if a car can't make it, emergency vehicles will not be able to make that, make that, nor would snowplows, school buses, or garbage trucks, delivery services.
You should show that, that's an actual snowplow.
Right, so then coming toward us.
It was an actual snowplow.
A private snowplow was coming through, and he had to turn around.
He's coming from the Post Road, we're looking at the Post Road from here, several houses.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, Officer Braun, I mean, Commissioner Braun.
I only wish.
It's only been a few months. Forgive me. My mind hasn't retired yet. So I only have a small amount to read left.
Can I go ahead and stop?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, you can let it roll and I'll read if you want to watch. I have notes here that I was going to read during this. Um, so, as I said, this, this is going to, going to create quite a blockade for, for neighbors, never mind emergency services, buses, and delivery trucks. Speaking of deliveries, the mail carrier will not deliver mail if vehicles are parked within five to six feet of a street-side mailbox. Tried to fight this with the, the, the post office, but it hasn't gotten anywhere. I have already experienced delays in mail delivery due to this, and I foresee it becoming a growing issue if the project proceeds without adequate parking. Now, let's consider Fairfield Place. And we, we watched that, we watched the video of the narrow, narrower road and how the vehicles cannot pass. We also watched how people trying to walk through pedestrians, strollers, becomes unsafe as they have to pass through in the middle of the street. And then again, we depicted what it would be like for cars to be parked on both sides of the street when winter comes and the snow falls. I just want to add, let's assume the town responds by adding no parking signs in the vicinity. While that might seem like a solution, it's unfair to the residents who need to park in front of their own homes. Moreover, it would only shift the problem elsewhere, creating the same issues in other parts of the broader neighborhood. Additionally, the entry and exit points of this project are inherently problematic, creating further traffic challenges. The congestion caused by vehicles trying to enter and exit so close to the Post Road will only add to the existing issues of collisions, impassable roadways, and pedestrian safety. I believe that I have outlined this project as a problem that will extend beyond the scope of Mr. Andres' building and adversely affect this community. We are not against Mr. Andres' right to build here. We are simply asking that he and the TPZ recognize that the current design is flawed and will significantly disrupt traffic flow, daily life, emergency services response, and most importantly, public safety in the Lindbergh Street, Lindbergh Court, Fairfield Place, Overhill Street, and surrounding areas.
I'm going to have to speed down.
Turn it off.
Yeah, off, or, you know, not mute, maybe, but.
To the TPZ commissioners, you have an important responsibility to determine which project should move forward. We appreciate the time, effort you just, you dedicate to shaping the future of our town. You are the stewards of Fairfield's character, and we trust you, and we trust you will approach this decision voluntarily. Please carefully consider whether this project, as currently proposed, is appropriate for the area. We urge you to reject the propos, the project as it stands. Thank you for your time, your service on this board, and the commitment to the safety of our town.
Thank you.
I'm going to rejuggle my presentation just a little bit because I think I can compress part of it. This is a document. Emily, if you could call up C 101, which is in the master documents, this is a, that page, I just want to.
Thank you, Ms. Hergren.
Is that page in the record, or would that be put in the record?
It's in the master, in the document called Master, and.
And it's the applicant's C 101, correct?
It's the applicant's C 101. I appreciate. I have more copies. Well, I'll, I'll start, so just so we can keep moving along here. So the point is, there are 71 parking spaces that are provided on-site, proposed. Just going backwards here, there are, there's office, there is a management office on-site that requires six spaces. It's 1,491 feet, it's, the regulations require one space per 250 feet. The applicant, and I'm sure Attorney Fallon will speak to this, I don't happen to agree with this, but. but the applicant with 40 units is providing 1.25 parking spaces per unit and provides, proposes to provide 50 um spaces to satisfy the parking needs of 40 residential units. So that leaves us at 56 spaces. Now, there is retail consisting of 1,574 square feet of retail, which is distributed, uh, as shown on the site plan, as 778 square foot space and a 796 square foot space for a total of 1,574 uh square feet of retail for which the applicant is proposing um six spaces. Here's where this really starts to go off the rails. The applicant is proposing to amend the regulations to shift uh parking for restaurant uses, and I'll get into that in a moment. But instead of requiring one space for every 40 square feet patron floor area, the applicant is asking this commission to amend the regulations to only require one space for every 250 square feet of patron floor area. Therefore, you have a coffee shop that is shown on the plan as being 353 square feet. So the applicant, and as I, I think I said before, coffee shop is this wide undefined entity, but it could be anything from a mom and pop coffee roaster to a Starbucks or a Dunkin' at 353 feet. And under the applicant's proposed amendment, the applicant would only allocate two parking spaces to that sort of a use. And, and just so that the, uh, commission is aware, if you look at the applicant's plan, uh, the applicant's proposed plan and layout shows in that coffee shop 35 seats. So for those 35 seats, the applicant is proposing just two parking spaces. Uh, and then we get to the restaurant. And the applicant, while the restaurant is 3,749 gross feet, the patron floor area um is 1,743 feet. And with that, with the proposed text amendment, the applicant is allocating seven parking spaces to the restaurant, but their drawing shows internally 101 seats. So that's seven parking spaces for 101 seats in a restaurant. And that doesn't include 38 seats which are shown for outdoor seasonal dining. Uh, and obviously, under the amendment to the regulations, which the commission had previously uh passed, I believe, the first 400 feet of that, four, 450, I can't recall, 400. Uh, doesn't require any parking uh for purposes of zoning. So you find yourself, but there are still, when there's seasonal outdoor dining, 139 seats served by that restaurant with just seven parking spaces. You've seen the video tonight on what parking looks like uh in the area, and I understand that that was a dramatization, but I but that reflects real world conditions with parking on those streets at times. And uh Devin Santa illustrated what parking looked like on that street and also provided an analysis. Um, and the big point here is that you don't have to be an expert, although the applicant's traffic expert did not address these, this parking situation. And as Devin Santa had pointed out in his report, your regulations under 12.10.3 require a parking study on the adequacy of parking. And that obviously uh didn't happen here. And 12.10.3 says the applicant shall submit a parking study indicating parking demand, proposed land uses and rationale for satisfying the parking demand of the proposed land uses. And the applicant has not begun to do that in this application. So uh I.
Talked about that last time though, right?
Yeah.
Applicability of that.
I'm sorry.
And we talked about that with the applicability, considering it was a regulation amendment and that section was for something else.
Yeah, but the point is.
Your point's taken, but I mean, I, I, I understand your point, but as far as like technical requirements.
There's gotta be something more.
I see your point.
Mr. Chairman, uh, can I ask a question because it, the matter before us is the text amendment, correct?
There's three matters before you.
Everything, we're doing this, we're taking it all together.
So we're considering the project?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine, fair question.
So uh, yeah, and just for the record, there was another application where the special permit and the site plan approvals were separated. In this case, all three items are on the agenda, so the special permit is uh, and cam are before the commission.
Thank you.
Uh, so, so just to, just to be clear, we're considering four and five, three, four, and five together?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
These have been presented to us together.
Okay.
Uh, all right, so uh at one, uh, in order to again move along, there was a discussion of the word, I believe spot zoning came up, and I think that it was sort of dismissed and not being an issue anymore, and I disagree with that wholeheartedly. And spot zoning is still uh something that exists under the law and it provides uh, the spot zoning has been generally defined as the reclassification of a small area of land in such a manner as to disturb the surrounding neighborhood. Um, it's an illegal exercise of power by a zoning authority. In order to establish spot zoning, two separate elements must be established. One, the change in zoning classification must only affect a small area, which is obviously this is only 0.72 acres, and the change must be out of harmony with the comprehensive plan of the municipality. And I would suggest that this intensity of use and this proposed change in intensity of use is so far out of line with anything else you're doing in commercial districts that uh, and I am citing to a case called Miller versus Planning and Zoning Commission, and Attorney Peers can uh discuss that with you as well. In terms of the text amendments, and this is, we can just go to the handout. Um, and if you separate the Schedule B, and the reason I wanted you to have this, this way is so that you can separate the Schedule B from Section 12 so that you can compare them side by side. Because the way the applicant presents the text amendments, it lacks context. And I think it's important, um, and I don't know if it's possible, I guess it's not possible right at the moment to get it up on the screen, but I just want to quickly go through these text amendments um in Schedule B. First one.
Can you identify the name of the document? I have it on my computer, but I don't know the name of it to look for it.
No, it is, um, if you go to the master application, it is attached to the application as Schedule B. It's the it's early on, and if you call up that Schedule B, it has, it's the, um, the Schedule B to the text amendment application.
Thank you.
And uh so first is uh 12.3.16. The applicant proposes to remove the limitation on the percentage of total floor area which can be residential. And this would be in the neighborhood design, I'm sorry, in the downtown uh business district. And so what the applicant is proposing is that the 50% limitation for residential uh be removed. So that language, and not to exceed more than 50% of the total floor area of the building, and no building of mixed residential business shall contain more than two stories devoted to residential use. So what the applicant is really proposing.
She's talking about, oh, I'm talking myself.
So uh, the big point is that is this commission, in order to make this project go, ready to adopt the regulation that basically says now that you can have uh you can have more than 50% residential, you could potentially have three or four floors of residential over commercial. And think about what the potential impacts are on the post road and the downtown corridor of that kind of change. And has, once again, and I know I keep saying it, but has an analysis been done to your satisfaction where you have that as a potential use with three or four floors of residential over, uh, over retail, over business? So that's the first thing. And uh, so that's a, that's a huge policy argument uh for our town. Um, Section 12.7.6.1 cards out, and it's important, if you go to page 59 of the uh regulations that I handed to you, and I'll try to do my best to describe this for the public who follow, but basically 12.7.6.1 speaks to uh street line setbacks. And what the applicant does here, and this is in my view, a problem, but 12.7.6.1 deals with street line setbacks. And it, what it says is um it, it, what this would say is if you have a lot that fronts on three public streets, meaning in this case, it's Fairfield Place, Post Road, and Lindbergh, that your str, your setback from all property lines shall be 10 feet. So right now, street line setback says 10 feet. But what this does is it takes out street line. So you're also, where you have a property that's on three public streets, the, the rear property line also, by removing street line, becomes 10 feet. So I don't know, and this is, by the way, applicable to all design business districts. So no one has identified to me how many properties currently exist that are surrounded by three streets. And this becomes significant because there's a later regulation that says that where you border on a residential district. So for example, just as this property borders on the B zone, the setback, in order to create a buffer between commercial development and residential development buildings so that they're not, so that the building is not butted up against, uh, you know, someone's home, you have a regulation that says that the setback shall be the same as the, as the residential district upon which you border. This takes that away. So what this says is, and wherever those properties are, where they're surrounded by three streets, suddenly now you can build that up to 40, 50 foot high building to within 10 feet of the property line by removing street line. So this broadens the impact of 12.7.6.1. Page 59, 12.7.6.2, it speaks to side property lines. And again, what uh, what this is saying is this does the same thing. This says where you have a lot fronting on three streets, suddenly all the setbacks, all the setbacks become 10 feet. And you also lose that protection of residential neighborhoods from that other section. 12.7.4, this appears, and this is on page 58, and that deals with height. And I don't know whether, I don't know whether Attorney Fallon covered this or not, and I'm not sure what happened here. But it says, no building shall exceed the following heights. And it's, it says four stories, but the online regulation says five stories. Is that Jim, uh, Mr. Went through you, Mr. Chairman? Uh, Jim, is it, is the online regulation correct with five stories or 50 feet?
Yes.
So I note that this regulation change that the applicant has in Schedule B says four stories or 52 feet. And I, there's no, just why would you? I, I assume that the four stories was an error, but I'll leave that to the applicant, but what possible, I'm sorry?
The proposal is to reduce it from five stories to four.
Yeah, so all, so all uh 12.7 properties would be, every property would be reduced to four stories then, or 52 feet. Which ever is less, but 12.7 is uh in all the design business districts. Okay, all right. Or 52 feet. So I guess you could build four stories with high ceilings, still up to 52 feet, or however you measure.
Yeah, I suspect, and I'll, I'll guess that especially for commercial, you need higher ceiling, highly, higher uh heights for the commercial.
So I'm not sure what the analysis is on that uh, and why that's being done. Uh, once again, 12.7.6.4 is uh on page 59, and that is the adjacent residence district boundary limitation. And I guess the applicant would propose that be removed, that protection be removed. 12.7.6.6 And again, if you look at them side by side, it refers to um additional setbacks, and I'm not sure. I understand that the applicant was trying to step back the uh fourth story, but uh it exempts balconies and open porches. uh says that open porches may project not more than seven feet into the required area for setback from the street line. So basically, the applicant proposes this 10-foot setback for a building, but um open porches may protect uh not more than seven feet. So again, this was done merely to accommodate um the applicant's building and not as a policy and not as a policy uh item. I have um drawing I'd like to submit to the commission. This is SKL 103. It's the applicant's drawing. It's, it's just, it's just half of it. And I'm offering this to the commission because it shows it, it shows that uh what the applicant is actually proposing to do in its plan is build a balcony while the building is 10 feet back. It, it appears that the applicant would propose to have balconies that subject from the front of the building that are just four feet off the street line, according to that drawing. So I wanted to bring that to the commission's attention. 12.7.5.2 uh amends uh total floor area and it expands uh total floor area in the center design business district. I don't know, it's hard to know what the impact of that would be on the various properties as they presently exist from a planning perspective. 25.7.9 um deals with the, the, obviously the set aside, set aside units. 28.6.1 establishes a metric, I guess that's the applicant's point, on 1.25 spaces per unit. Uh, but the commission already has uh the ability to reduce that by 50% under the regulation. So I would urge the commission not to establish that as a metric. 28.6.12 uh again is, creates that one space for each 250 square feet of patron floor area, which as we've shown is really problematical. And I mean, apparently problematical. And really, as, as the applicant's own plan demonstrates, makes absolutely no sense. And finally, 31.2.16B deals with exceptions. And this again is totally tailored to the applicant's building and will result in a structure by exempting the uh, some of the features on the roof. The actual, while the building may for zoning purposes, show a zoning height of 52 feet. The effect of uh effect of. Effect of thirty one point two point sixteen is would be to create a building. With projections and elevator structures and that sort of thing with a gross height of sixty seven or sixty nine feet. Which is just towering. So. Once again. For for those, I I just wanted to go through those and you can see him side by side and. Trying to move along a little bit more quickly here. There is on that waiver issue, I would suggest to the commission that I would resist. Getting into a place where the commission can waive on a case by case basis, parking spaces. Because you run into a uniformity issue under the law. Uh, under McKenzie and those kind of cases, all property owners in a district. Treated equally and it there's really. Law looks dimly on sort of waiving hard requirements in the zoning regulations on a case by case basis to their uniformity issue.
Just remind us, please, of the waiver aspect.
There there's a provision and I I could. Find it in a moment. That says that the commission may, under certain circumstances, waive fifty percent of the parking.
That's not proposed, so that's that's.
That exists, I know. But as you consider that hard metric. Better that that waiver. I had provided the commission. Uh, section twelve, if the commission would just. Look at section twelve. Point four on page. Fifty two. Twelve point four. Point fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. The distinctions in our zoning regulations between what the applicant calls a coffee shop. And what is a restaurant. Are really not well defined in the zoning regulations. So what they call a coffee shop could easily be a restaurant and what they call a restaurant could easily be a coffee shop. Twelve point four point fifteen refers to restaurants and food service. And it says including non-table service restaurants included. Twelve point four point sixteen refers to drive through restaurants, which this obviously. As as I see the application right now is not a drive through restaurant. And twelve point four point seventeen refers to restaurants and other food service establishments. Where customers are served only when seated at tables or counters. And they can include takeout as an incidental use. But the lines, the way restaurants began to operate during covid. And we had this discussion during, as I referenced in a presentation earlier, in the Chick-fil-A application. These lines begin to blur on these restaurants, so I would urge the commission to keep that in mind. So. I would love to get this close tonight, so I'm going to just reference Devon Santa wrote. A letter to the commission, his original letter, and then a follow up. I provided the commission with a copy of that. And the significance of that is that the applicant really did not address. The drainage issues that Devon raised in his letter. And I also provided the commission with excerpts from the Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual. Which is sort of the guide for designing storm water. Treatment methods and also assessing storm water methods. And significantly, and as Devon had indicated in his report. At page one eighty of the Stormwater Manual. It establishes that percolation testing is not acceptable for determining field infiltration. And the applicant did not adequately analyze the infiltration rates at the site. And used a blanket infiltration method. And that is not in accordance with the state guidelines. And Devon does a very good job both in his original letter and in his follow up letter. Speaking to the vertical separation. Between high groundwater and the bottom of the detention system that the applicant proposed. And showed that in many instances, that's as the system is designed. Rather than being an area for the infiltration of water. And once again, to oversimplify, there are these underground basins that receive storm water from the building and parking areas. They receive the water, their bottoms are permeable. And they collect water and then they allow the water to percolate through the bottom and be absorbed into the groundwater. But as Devon pointed out, the height of the groundwater particularly associated with the hundred year storm is such. That most of those basins will already be immersed in groundwater. That is at an elevation above the bottom of those detention chambers. And he does a full analysis in his report. I urge you to take a look at it. And. I would call the commission's attention to twenty five point seven point four, which sets forth. The standards for special permit, which is being considered by. Commission as one of the three applications before it. And obviously, the specifications for all driveways, off street parking and loading spaces, storm drainage. Sewage disposal facilities and landscaping shall be subject to the approval of the commission. That's under twenty five point seven point four. Twenty five point seven point five speaks to. A lot being of sufficient size and shape to permit the use for buildings, other structures and facilities. In such a manner that will not be detrimental to the neighborhood or adjacent property. I know you're familiar with the standard, but obviously based on the comments by the public. And the evidence that where you met standard in your regulations has not begun to be met. And twenty five point seven point seven. Says that the development shown on the site and architectural plan shall be of such a character as to harmonize. With the neighborhood to accomplish a transition in character between areas of unlike character to protect property values. In the neighborhood to preserve and enhance the appearance and beauty of the community and to avoid undue traffic congestion. And I think that the. Based on the testimony of the public, based on the materials that are before you. Overwhelmingly, that standard burden is on the applicant to establish all of these elements. As Mr. Went will instruct you when you get to the executive session on this. So. Really, I appreciate, I think my clients appreciate sort of this, this, the creativity in some way. Of a of a future plan that maybe would be appropriate in Fairfield at some point. But I guess the big point is that we. We just do not presently have the infrastructure. To support. An application like this, and I know that it's sort of transit oriented living. And we do have a town where a lot of people do commute, a lot of people. Obviously commute to the city and other places on the train, but we are not at a place right now. Where public transportation is. Has adequate infrastructure for local uses. People don't go to restaurants, coffee shops and retail spaces. Post Road and Lindbergh Place by commuting. Everyone drives cars. And so this, this is an application that. That is something that might be considered many years down the line, but we're just not there. And, you know, ironically, we, you know, I started my presentation and we had a. Discussion last, like the last session about this eight dash thirty G application. And I am once again going to suggest to the commission that you not. Consider it in the context of this application. It will rise and fall on its own. And I've looked at the that application and I'm aware some similar significant issues with the drainage. And with the design, but it strikes me. That it's ironic that, first of all, we need affordable housing in Fairfield, obviously. And I don't endorse that application that is filed. And once again, there are a number of issues, but ironically, it's an eight dash thirty G application that proposes sixty units. And I wonder if those those twenty more units that are proposed here. Are are in some ways less troubling to me. And jamming this commercial development. Onto this site. And so, you know, it's kind of.
Let me ask you about that because I'm hoping you're concluding, so to speak.
I am good.
We think I was made at the very least had asked Attorney Fallon. Whenever it was. About the restaurant use in particular and the concern about parking because. It wasn't a, I think the word I used was complimentary. Use with residential, the idea being when residences are away at work, retail would be. Regular retail nine to five would use parking that was there. And when retail was closed and the residents are back, that kind of complimentary kind of use. Restaurant seems to be more in the evenings, you know, kind of conflicts with the with that shared. Uh, usage of sorts.
Ever go to Chips?
Well, Chips will go all day, yeah.
There's no control here.
Well, that's fair, but my question, I guess, is this, is how does? How would it work? Because I think I asked this of Attorney Fallon, I'll ask it of you. I assume your concerns are not assuaged if restaurant use was not allowed here. If it was some other retail use that was determined later by another special exception or whatever. But I'd just like to have you talk on that is if there was, if there if there was a rejection of restaurant use here. And it was a retail use that was somehow more complimentary for residential. I assume your concerns are not completely assuaged, but that's got to make it a little easier, I would think.
So think of the most intense. Think of the most intense retail use you can conceive of. And imagine three thousand feet of intense retail there. With a product that is popular, there has to be some, just can't be. Well, this restaurant use seems way over the top. Let's let's try retail. There's still got to be some. Reasonable analysis as to sort of what the impacts are on the neighborhood. And it's just not here, so we can't just run from the retail, run from the restaurant use here and say. That retail use might be less intense or might double better because it's not clear to me. And the problem we run into is, once it's approved for retail use. Just as I discussed with 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 coffee shop or restaurant. You lose control, so you don't know. One retail use to another doesn't come to this commission. It's just a change of.
No, but there's always parking minimums, at least currently, with with some or most retail uses. So you still have that aspect of it where it have to be, the idea I would think. Everybody potentially is to get the parking on site. All of it, and there may be some spillage, but that would be the, I suspect that's the target for. What most would consider a responsible, or maybe that's the way to handle it is being.
We're not even, but we're not even remotely there. Even by the applicant's own analysis, just their office and their and their residential by their analysis. And I think the one point two five is low. That's fifty six spaces right there. That's only fifteen spaces left. By the way, when I talked about the parking issue, that doesn't, with those restaurants or with that. Where are the employees parking? That's not even factored in. It's just, that's not even factored in. So. So as a practical.
That's fine. I just wanted to raise the issue.
So I guess the big, the big point is, and I I understand. Look, you have, you have a big sector of this neighborhood coming out because they are scared to death of this development. And the impact on their neighborhood. And there's been this. There's been this, I I I heard that there was a comment made about something about NIMBY and I heard NIMBY earlier. And, you know, there's two kinds of NIMBY. One is not in my backyard, and I get that. But the other one is, when you see a development like this, it's now I must become involved. Because this is going to change my neighborhood forever, and that's why these people are sitting here. And I started. Last time by saying, these are the neighborhoods that merit the greatest level of protection by this commission. And I understand that it's transitional. I understand that these folks knew that it was near the post road. But these are the neighborhoods that need to be protected. I'm less worried about our neighborhood. Less worried about where I live up in Stratfield. From the kind of threats that this kind of development poses. So it's just, we are not ready for this development in this town. So for all those reasons, and I. I submitted some more material. I'm not going to take up any more of the commission's time. But I urge you to deny the text amendment and deny the statute. And I want to thank you for your generous patience.
Oh, how much time?
Yeah, just.
An hour and five minutes.
That's not against you. That is more just a conversation we had earlier. I think it's helpful for us as. As a commission, has nothing against you or anybody else.
But it was all good stuff.
I assume no further questions for Attorney Green. Any other member of the public wish to hear this application? Again, if you've already spoken, I'd ask you not to come up again or if unless it's completely needed and new. But if you, new people. Who hasn't spoken, and I know you, you haven't spoken yet, sir.
Mister Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Peter Ambrose. I'm a lawyer here in Fairfield, practiced lawyer here for many years. I own forty seven Fairfield Place. I've owned it for many years. I'm very familiar with the traffic in the area. My son, his wife. And their three children have lived there for four or five years. They love. They love the neighborhood. It's just a wonderful family neighborhood. The problem, unfortunately, there are no sidewalks on Fairfield Place. It's extremely difficult to traverse Fairfield Place where there's traffic coming down the street. Cars do park on both sides of the street in some areas. But one has to drive very slowly out Fairfield Place to be safe. I believe. Heather Frank spoke about exiting Lindbergh Place. When you exit Fairfield Place onto the post road. And you have to deal with the parking in front of Rupert Hanukkah. It's extremely dangerous. And I've been put into a real. Preparized position several times with my grandchildren in the car. When we're just trying to make a right or left hand turn coming out of Fairfield Place. That's a huge problem. There is a major issue with a line of sight. When you exit Fairfield Place, but there's also a major issue with the sight line. When you're traveling down Fairfield Place towards the post road. Because there's a curve in that area. And it it and from. Close to seventy five yards to the end of the street, it's very difficult to see traffic coming in the opposite direction. My concern is is that. I'm very concerned about. Not my own grandchildren, but also the young children that play in that street. It's their playground. It's where they spend their summers. It's where they spend their 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 free time. And I I I see cars now traveling pretty fast down that and I'm careful for them. They bicycle, they play chalk, they skip games. I mean, they're they're there all the time during the summer. And this increase in traffic that's going to happen, I think is is going to severely. And this increase in traffic that's going to happen, I think, is is going to severely aggravate. The traffic issue. So my concern is primarily one of safety. And I really think that's a consideration that has to be has to be thought out very carefully by the commission. Thank you for taking the time to hear me. Thank you.
Oh, I thought that was any. No, that's okay. I thought you were coming up. Sorry. Was there, I thought there was some other people knew that wanted to speak.
Wanted to say very briefly.
Name and address, please.
Chris McAbrahne fifty one Overhill, just on the concept of complimentary parking. I think a lot of people who commute into the city. Don't necessarily do it every day. People who are moving to the suburbs. Are doing so now more because they don't have to commute into the city every day. So the idea that the parking spots will be open five days a week from nine to five. As people won't be home. That might be true on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, but not, you know, other days of the week, and it doesn't apply on weekends either.
Thank you. I know you've spoken. I remember.
It's only getting one.
Last one minute?
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
So it's Nelson Quoc one thirteen Fairfield Place. I did some reading on the traffic. Everything's coming on traffic. Not park, but traffic survey that the applicant. Presented. Your sample range was twenty nineteen to twenty twenty four. And I sent an email about this last night. If you remember. The country shut down in twenty twenty. Well, I think two years. So their traffic. Pedestrian crash injury. Half of that is no traffic at all. Nobody's moving, nothing. I saw my skull at home. Everybody's remote. That's basically it. So it's, I think it's flawed. The sample size is too small.
I know you, is it quick? Because I know you were last time. Any else? Just as she comes up, anybody else in person? Just a minute, if that's okay.
My name is Clarissa Porter. I live at thirty seven Fairfield Place. I live on the end of the street that is abutting what the development will be. I just wanted to comment about this issue of the complimentary parking. One of the difficulties at this end of the street is that cruel Britannia. Is down on the corner of the post road in Fairfield Place. It's an extremely popular restaurant. Its own parking lot cannot hold all the patrons. Currently, people are parking on Fairfield Place. They're parking illegally on the post road. They're also sometimes parking illegally on the post road on the block. Between Fairfield and Lindbergh, and they also currently. Rent, as I understand, from the developers. Five or six spaces which they will lose. If, so that that parking is always there. It doesn't go away. And very often. There there are no parking spots. In certain places and sometimes just totally ignored. And they also have huge delivery trucks that come in there. So there's a degree of traffic. It doesn't matter whether we're at work or not or whatever.
I remember, we remember that testimony. So that, thank you for reminding.
Thank you.
Anybody joining us remotely that wishes to be heard on these applications that has not already spoken? Anybody, Miss Harrigan in the chat?
No, who's indicated.
Anybody joining us in person or remotely wish to be heard in this application? You're joining us by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. Seeing no one else, hearing no one else. I'll close the public comment portion. Turn back to rebuttal. How long do you have?
You can bear with me and in the spirit of the new order. And maybe and maybe allow fifteen minutes over.
I'm just going to say, I'm I'm inclined, if you if you tell me it was forty five minutes.
I'm under the gun.
No, I'm, I would, I I agree with attorney. And hopefully the rest of the public, so it's just an idea. So if everybody's willing to stay a little late.
I'll do my best to to move it along, famous last word, but I will. So. Let's start to go back a little bit and talk about what we're trying to do here. I think this is a generational opportunity and a generational proposal for this town. What we're looking to do is to create a vibrant mixed use development within walking distance of our downtown center. At the currently underdeveloped parcels that exist here that are zoned commercially. It's a gateway in our at our property, at our community, and it's an opportunity that we have. It's going to provide an incentive for future development in this important gateway area. And it's going to provide a very creative mix of development with regard to both residential. And other opportunities, but recreational and public areas of cultural activity as well, all as we've elaborated on way back when. When we started this process. Another important thing that I don't want you to lose sight of here and has not been mentioned much. Is that all of this is going to be accomplished in the context of regulations that will. Be a very strong emphasis on a commitment to affordable housing opportunities within the town. This application has been endorsed by the Affordable Housing Committee of the town. As a as a as a harbinger. For what we should be trying to do, especially in our downtown areas in conjunction with transit oriented development. But not leaving aside the need to have developers make a stronger commitment in this community to affordable housing. The proposal is going to have an extremely positive effect on the character of this area, and I'll elaborate on that in a minute. It's going to provide continued economic vitality for our downtown business center as a whole. And all of this can be accomplished. In a development that will provide continued diversification of our housing inventory, including a very meaningful affordable components. Now, I'm not going to go through each and every one of the amendments. As Mr. Green did, you're familiar with them, you've read them. We've worked carefully with staff over the course of probably a year and a half to come up with this. What I will say. Is that the proposals here are certainly consistent. With the draft plan of conservation and development. Now, let's talk about the draft plan of conservation and development. This commission has spent two years. Working in your planning function. To try to come up with a vision for what Fairfield should be moving forward. And that's presently embodied in the draft plan. And that draft plan does envision. The extension of the center design business district into this area as we propose to do it. And the proposed amendments that we are offering to you are also consistent, as I've elaborated on in my original presentation. With the recommendations of the the draft plan of conservation and development. The fact that that plan is still a work in progress is recognized. But it's also these principles that are embodied in the draft plan, that that are embodied in the amendments we propose to you have been consistently. Within the draft plan over the two years that you've been working on it. And I think the reason that they have been is because they are good for this community. You know, one thing that I think. This commission working every single Tuesday night, and I would be remiss if I didn't say, and I should have said it, but you didn't. How extraordinary what you're doing is. But we're at a focal point. An important, important time for this community. And that is referenced particularly in areas such as this. Not where developers are coming in to seek zone changes from residential to commercial. But where they're seeking to take historically commercially zoned property. And develop it with an eye towards the next generation of Fairfielders. And you're going to see that again without digressing in other applications in the pipeline that are coming to you. And yes, I did use the word NIMBY. I appreciate these neighbors. I appreciate the neighborhood, but I'll, as I'll elaborate on in a minute. The fact of the matter is, we're not going to have an adverse impact on their neighborhood. And in fact, this is commercially zoned property, and we have rights to use it commercially. And the amendments we seek are not inconsistent, as I said, with the draft plan. If you look at the surrounding neighborhood here, not only the underlying zoning. This development, as we propose it with its mixed use and its vibrancy, is going to have a very, very positive impact. On the town as a whole, as well as the neighborhood. Now, in that regard, before we move on, Mr. Green talked about spot zoning, the bugaboo spot zoning. But he cited, interestingly enough, the Miller case. And I think you have copies of the Miller case, and he submitted it. But I'm just going to read to you. Quickly, certain excerpts from the Miller case. Because, and I won't get into that page, whatever, because we're trying to move along. When acting in a legislative capacity, the commission is the formulator of public policy. And its discretion is much broader than an administrative board. Or one exercising a quasi judicial function. In the exercise of its discretion, a commission is free to amend its zoning regulations and or its zoning map. Whenever time, experience, and reasonable planning for contemporary or future conditions reasonably indicate the need for such a change. Okay, again, this property is already zoned commercial. It's surrounded by commercial uses involving office buildings, gas stations, the famous restaurant. I I did admire the owner of Gru Batania coming in and complaining about the parking when she's a primary cause, but that's just an interesting sidelight. I'm glad she's doing well, but nobody stopped her from coming in to that neighborhood. And creating partially at least the drama that was shown in the video staged or not. We have a car dealership and we have the exit property. Getting back to 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 spot zoning. Merely because a change of zoning classification involves a small area land. And the new classification differs from the immediate area does not mean the claim of spot zoning will inevitably prevail. Some commentators have opined that the concept of spot zoning is obsolete. In that the size of the parcel will not support a claim of spot zoning if the zone changes in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And then he cites also Fuller. Now, what's the comprehensive plan? Again, quoting the case. The requirement of a comprehensive plan is generally satisfied when the zoning authority acts with the intention of promoting the best interest of the community as a whole. In making a decision regarding a change in zoning classification. A zoning agency must consider the general public welfare inherent in the comprehensive development. The municipal comprehensive plan is found in the zoning regulations and the existing zone map. Which are primarily concerned with the use of property. Again, we're already zoned commercial. We're not looking to amend anything by way of changing the property from commercial use. And we are in an area where there are numerous commercial uses, as I've indicated. The Supreme Court rejected. A spot zoning claim which had prevailed in the trial court. And the opinion authored by Chief Justice Maltby, the court's majority upheld the change in zone classification, notwithstanding the side of the parcel. The court focused on the commission's finding that allowing the use of a small area in a manner different from the surrounding area serves the best interest of the community as a whole. Citing Bartram versus the zoning commission. A similar result was achieved in De Mayo versus the zoning commission. Where the Bridge Board Zoning Commission voted to change the zoning classification. Of a parcel in the Residence A to Garden Apartments, the commission found that the change was consistent with the comprehensive plan and that there was a need. To cite a certain type of housing in the Residence Double A and Residence A zone.
That's all still Miller.
That's Miller, the case I think Mr. Green submitted. It's Miller versus planning a zoning commission. And it's August nineteen twenty nineteen. And it's Judge Radcliffe's decision. So. The basis here that I'm asking you to consider, and this gets into this whole NIMBY, and NIMBY is not necessarily meant critically of anybody or anything. It's just you have to weigh in your planning function. The interest of the community as a whole, and maybe sensitivities that an individual neighborhood have has. In doing that, you look at what the underlying zone already is and what is in the surrounding neighborhood. And again, what we're proposing here is an application in a business zone. Utilizing the design, the the center design business district that will bring the kind of development that parcel needs. And do so with a significant affordable component. Now, in the interest of speeding along, I was going to call back both. Mister Wayne DeZanzo, who was our engineer, and I was going to call back. Our traffic expert. But I'm not going to do that tonight. What I'm going to do instead. Is what I asked them to do. Is I asked, first of all, I asked the our engineers to take Mister. Santa's letter that you received. And to literally format it. So that we quote. Exactly what. Mister Santa says in his letter, and then in dark. Here, we give our response. It it's it's classic rebuttal. There is no new information. I'll give Mister Green a copy. But it is simply our response directly. I got a whole bunch of them here. Mister Wayne, I'm going to say one for Mister Green. It's our response directly to exactly. What was stated in the testimony of Mister Santa.
Have you forwarded this to staff electronically?
I have not yet, but I I I certainly will do that. First thing tomorrow morning.
So we can add it to the record easily.
I did the same. Thing, or I asked. SLR, who's our traffic engineers, to do the same thing. Basically, taking. The points made by Mister, I believe his name is Monteleone. And give our response. Okay, so I'm I'm trying to, I would normally call both these gentlemen back. But I absolutely trust the dedication and comprehensive diligence of this commission. So I know that you will read through all that carefully.
Excuse me, is this in the, was this emailed or would this be posted later?
It will be posted first thing in the morning. I apologize. I did.
No worries. No, thank you.
I meant to do that, and I didn't do it, and I apologize. We'll do it first thing in the morning. Okay. You also did receive for the record. A letter from the town, community, and economic development commission. They, that was dated November eighth twenty twenty four, and they also very articulately. Supported. This application. As I said, as did the Affordable Housing Commission. Moving along. I do want to emphasize again. The affordable component here, because I think that is very, very important. And and should not be overlooked. It's, I think, unique. And it shows the applicant's dedication. To. The concept of affordable housing. And I think we'll set a proper standard moving forward for development. Let's talk about the restaurant use. And in doing that. I think. Perhaps the the comments of the chair were prophetic. We, as Mister Green pointed out, propose an amendment. To section twenty eight point six point twelve. To modify the requirement. Parking for restaurant uses to one space for each two hundred and fifty square feet of patron floor. After four nights of public hearing, I think it's fair to say that it appears that the restaurant use. As proposed, has been a central area of concern and a flashpoint with regard to this application. We have discussed this with my clients. We don't want this to jeopardize the approval of this very important development. For the town, this, I think, generational opportunity for this site. So where are you? And this gets somewhat, I think, to what the chair was saying. You have an amendment in front of you. With regard to section twenty eight point six point twelve, as I just referred to. If you feel. That the restaurant use. Is not an appropriate component. If you feel that the restaurant use is not an appropriate component of this development at this time, it can simply, you can simply not choose to approve the amendment modifying parking requirements for restaurants as relates to Section 28.6.12. If you do that, I represent for the record and stipulate for the record that if that's your decision, the applicant will respect that decision and that determination of the commission, and will not appeal the denial of that specific regulation amendment proposal. If you do that, this would eliminate our ability to construct a restaurant on the site as currently proposed, because we simply wouldn't have enough parking to accommodate the current regulation of one space for every 40 square feet of patron area. What that would mean would be that space would revert to retail. Retail use. Now, Mr. Green, I was confused, because I don't know. Mr. Green seemed to say that somehow you don't approve a retail use until you know what the retailer is. Well, of course, that's not true, because one of the fundamental rules of zoning is zoning regulates the use, not the user. And that's why you have regulations that relate to what the required parking is for each use. And you prescribe what the required parking is for retail use. And if we convert the restaurant space, if that be your judgment, to retail space, then we have enough parking to accommodate retail under your regulations without any need for any amendment. Similarly, I don't want to take you back down the Chick-fil-A rabbit hole, but I don't agree with Mr. Green that there is such a substantial difference between what's a coffee shop and what's a restaurant. And the coffee shop is by its nature a retail utilization, because it doesn't meet the provisions for a restaurant in terms of table seating and the like. But to take the big picture, you have control of this application. If you like this application, but you don't like the restaurant, all you need to do is simply not grant the amendment of Section 28.6.12, leaving in place the requirement for one space for every 40 square feet. That would make any restaurant use there illegal and nonconforming. And you can then also stipulate that that would mean that any development of the former restaurant space would have to revert to retail in compliance with your regulations. This is not to blow the horn with my clients here, but this is really an ultimate good faith effort by these applicants to ensure approval of a mixed-use proposal that will provide a much-needed diversification of housing inventory in the Center Design Business District to include that very significant affordable component. And again, I would remind you that under the Arm regulation amendment proposal, we are suggesting that you adopt a standard in the Center Design Business District, you know, where the railroad station plays a very prominent role, that the affordable requirement in such a development in this zone will increase to not less than 20% of the proposed units. The applicant is committed, if desired by the commission, to include within our proposal enhanced requirements even for additional affordable units, as we said at the beginning. But we certainly stand by our amendment. And there's something else I would want to talk about too, because I think it's been very prominent in the news recently. We've seen concerns and consideration that there is a disparity in our town of where our affordable housing goes. Now, in fairness to this commission, you can't control what applications come before you for what uses. You have to deal with them as they come. But if the concern is we need to intensify our efforts to bring more affordable housing to other parts of the town that haven't seen significant affordable housing development, well, guess what? This application checks that box too. Because it's bringing a significant commitment to affordable housing and a particular development at 20% in the Fairfield/Southport area, where you can count on one hand what you have for affordable housing now. There's, just recently in the paper the other day, concern or consideration that the affordable unit development has been isolated in other geographic sections of town without proper emphasis in terms of increasing affordable housing options townwide, and especially in areas within the Center Design Business District. This application checks that box. And I would want to say again, because I feel strongly about this. It is not the commission's ability to decide what applications come before you and when. You have to judge them as they come. But when you get an application that provides for a commitment to affordable housing in an area of town where it is much needed and underutilized, then I think that's a very important aspect of consideration when you deal with this. We really believe strongly in this development of this property and the proposals that we will offer for other developments. If you approve this application as a real benchmark for a commitment to quality in future mixed-use developments within this zone, while providing a proper groundwork for the meaningful inclusion of meaningful affordable housing opportunities in the Center Design Business District. We've heard everything that the neighbors have said. I would point out that it's an interesting situation with the video. If it's a demonstration, then it's speculative, because it assumes there's a restaurant, and that's within your purview to decide whether there is or not. If it's actually, as Mr. Green kind of tried to throw in, well, it's an existing condition that sometimes exists. Well, if it's an existing condition, that's something that should be addressed through the Police Commission, of which Mr. Ambrose was a member and may still be for many years, and not stop this developer from developing this very worthy proposal in property that's zoned for such commercial use. So you can't have it both ways. If it's an example of what could happen if we had a restaurant there, then you can decide if we're going to have a restaurant there. If it's a matter of what really already exists on the site, then that is something. First of all, I don't think it is, because since this matters begin, I've driven down those two streets over 20 times to see for myself what goes on. And other than times like Sunday brunch with the aforementioned Grubitania, I haven't seen any duplication of what you saw in that video, which was staged. But to the extent that they feel there's an existing problem, they should go to the Police Commission or the new traffic authority and review with them what can be done to deal with an existing problem. So really, that's what I've got here. I think I've got a proposal that, as I said at the beginning, is generational and can have a very, very, very important impact on an area of the town that I know is one that is of significant concern, or not concern, but interest to this community. It is one of the two gateway areas on the Post Road, and you'll be hearing about the second one in a week or so. But it is a gateway opportunity for us as a community to take all of the planning function that you've worked on for the last two years and bring it to implementation. And in doing that, you'll be able to say to these neighbors, hey, we heard what you said, we heard what you said about the parking, we heard what Mr. Green said about the restaurant use, and we acted on that appropriately. But in acting on it, we didn't reject this very reasonable mixed-use proposal, which otherwise is going to lead the neighborhood and the developer with doing something we particularly don't want to do, because we think what we are proposing is far better for the neighborhood and for the community and for us. So we thank you, I really thank you from the bottom of my heart on behalf of the clients for your attention, especially in these circumstances that you've been dealing with over the last two or three months. And God bless you for your service to the town.
Thank you. I appreciate your swiftness. If you have other things.
No, I'm good. Thank you. No, I'm good.
Okay.
One thing, if we had two seconds, if Mr. Green gave you a point of personal whatever, listening to this session. One thing I would recommend you think about, and we do it in a lot of other towns, revise your application form to put on it applicant's estimated time of presentation. Because what I find that does is it makes the applicant think about his presentation, their presentation, and it kind of sets a standard. Because if the applicant wrote down on that thing 30 minutes, or one hour, or two hours, you know, absent circumstances that were beyond the applicant's control, he's going to say, geez, I kind of made a commitment to the commission that I could do this in an hour. So I would suggest you give that some thought. Thank you for your service and your time.
Attorney Green.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman. So these letters have been handed to me, they're dated December 11, 2024, and January 28, 2025. The applicant is either amending its application, in which case I presume the commission will hold a public hearing open so we can address the amendment, or the applicant is asking the commission to rewrite its application for it.
No, I'm not doing either.
These letters is what you're referring to?
I have an application before the commission that involves special permit, zone change, and text amendments. The only point that I made and that I think is proper is that to the extent that the commission believes this proposal is worthy of approval, but not with a restaurant use, you are entirely in control of that, because if you don't approve the amendment of the text amendment for the change in restaurant.
No, I understand, I'm not sure that's where he's going. Are you saying there's some?
This letter says, January 28 says, the 72 proposed parking spaces are adequate to accommodate the proposed land uses on-site now that the restaurant land use has been converted to retail. This was dated December 28, before we spent five hours sitting here talking about a restaurant.
Just, I mean.
Mr.
Just said, though, that it's not that, at least he's saying now, he's not necessarily withdrawing it, he's saying we have the option.
You make the option, and to the extent that the traffic consultant articulated it the way he did, all I did was I told the traffic consultant that it was likely that we were going to offer the commission the opportunity or the suggestion not to approve the restaurant use. And so to the extent he took that to the level he did, he did. But I don't think that constitutes a new application.
Are we going to address the retail use now for the whole site?
I mean, we always had the opportunity not to pick and choose with our regulations. Or, I mean, there are some retail on-site.
Retail use, if you approve the applicant.
He's telling me he's not withdrawing the restaurant use. He's saying we have the opportunity.
We have the opportunity.
To deny it if we wish to.
And to take it to the next step, and without being presumptuous, if you decide not to approve the amendment with regard to the restaurant use, then as a matter of compliance, retail is a permitted use in the zone. And provided we meet the standards for retail with regard to parking, that's a compliance application. That doesn't require a new hearing of everything, it happens every day.
What would you think a new hearing is needed for?
Apparently, the applicant is offering an application with an either or in it that is being offered on rebuttal after the public hearing is closed. Basically, the opportunity.
Every application that is filed before you, it has your discretion in terms of to approve it, to deny it, or to approve it in part, or deny it in part. That's not offering any alternative.
No new regulation amendments he's suggesting.
Let me just suggest this.
Zone change difference. And I don't know that there's much to the site plan other than depending on what we do with the regulation amendments, whether we have a compliance site plan at the time.
Yeah. And if the site plan doesn't.
Something, Mr. Wayne?
If the site plan doesn't comply with the existing zoning regulations, then.
The challenge is on him. If somehow there's a parking minimum that he missed, you know, then we have no choice but to deny the site plan potentially. I don't think there's a new, there's certainly no new application that I can see here.
Objection is noted.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Final questions for Attorney Fallon?
Question. In your FLR letter.
Yes, sir.
It says, third paragraph round, note. It begins with note, one of the commentaries predicted, predicated, I'm sorry. It says, "This response reflects the applicant's decision to remove the restaurant use from the development plan."
Yeah.
Could you please refresh my memory? If the restaurant use is not removed from the plan, have we addressed the questions raised by?
The issue there was, there was, at one of the earlier hearings, I don't know if it was Mr. Green, somebody raised the issue of a parking study. And at the time, that's what led us to consider the alternative of, you know, not approving the amendment for the restaurant. So, you know, I think the letter kind of speaks for itself. And if you look at the original application, the, excuse me, the original traffic study, there is reference to an analysis of how the parking, even with the restaurant use, would be adequate at 72 spaces, I think is what it is. So yes, I would direct you back, Commissioner Randolph.
During rebuttal.
I would direct you back to the original traffic study, which does discuss parking adequacy with the restaurant use assumed.
You can answer my question, thank you.
Anything else? Attorney Fallon, thank you. Attorney Green, thank you. Members of the public, thank you for a very good conversation. Long, but it was needed. Appreciate your professionalism and your stability. As usual, what we've come to expect with Fairfield. So I'll close the hearing.
Thank you.
It's a matter, thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.